All right. All right, welcome everyone this evening. Calling to order the City of San Carlos City Council meeting for June 24, 2024. Welcome, everyone. We're all present, so there are no teleconference requests this evening from council. If you will now please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That brings us to item four, changes to the order of the agenda. Jeff, any changes from staff this evening?
Nothing from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Do any of my colleagues have a change to the agenda? Seeing none, that takes us on to item five, presentations. And first, we're going to present a proclamation declaring July of 2024 Park and Recreation Month. Amy, if you could please join us. I'm sure everyone knows, but Amy Newby is our Park and Rec Director, and we like celebrating her. Her department does all the fun stuff in town, so if you like Goblin Walk or Music in the Park or our lighting festival at wintertime, that's all her. And she also runs all the leagues, it goes on and on, our senior center, our youth center, our youth advisory commission. And July is the perfect month for it. I know if I'm in town, I will be at Music in the Park. It's a really nice thing to do. Proclamation is just us as a city making a formal recognition, so I will read it now. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Park and Recreation Month, whereas parks and recreation are an integral part of communities throughout this county, including the city of San Carlos. Whereas park and recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the city of San Carlos recognizes that parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the well-being of our community, enriching the lives of its residents and visitors, as well as adding value to the community's homes and neighborhoods. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, John Dugan, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby declare July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month, and in doing so urge the community to continue to use and enjoy our parks and recreational opportunities. All right. Thank you, Amy. Very good. If you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan, and council for recognizing parks and recreation again this month of July. Just want to say an extended thank you to all of our staff that really keep our programs going on for the community, our parks maintenance workers for keeping our parks beautiful for everyone to enjoy in town. And as you can imagine, summer is our busiest season, but yet we have everything going on year-round, so definitely take some time this summer, come out into our parks, go to one of the concerts, we have some movie nights in the parks, and enjoy. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much, Amy, and thank you for all that you and your department do here in San Carlos. And it's also a nice proclamation this evening because not too much further down our agenda, we will be discussing a new master plan for one of our great parks here in San Carlos. So that moves us to item six, council communications and announcements. Do any of my colleagues have anything they would like to share with us this evening? Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan. Two items. One, I just want to mention that I was able to attend. Cal Water had their emergency operations center open. They did a drill and run-through, so I had a chance to spend about half a day with Cal Water going through their scenarios. And we were, San Carlos was well represented. It was a great presentation, great program. We had people from the city manager's office, from Public Works, so we were well represented in terms of the program, and I just want to thank Cal Water for their work on that and for city staff for being there and representing. And then the second piece I wanted to mention is, I had talked to the city manager about this, I just want to highlight this. On Juneteenth, I happened, I was driving around, I saw at least on three occasions there was construction going on, and it's a holiday that we have, and there should be no construction going on that. And I don't know if there's, because it's a new holiday, it's new to the calendar, whether that's something we should think about, sending notices out, making sure that people are aware of that, that we don't have construction on federal holidays. So I just wanted to pass that on.
All right. Thank you, Adam. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple things. I was over at Tierney Opticians today picking up my latest prescription for glasses, and that would not normally be of interest to anybody except that Tierney Opticians has a wall. Their outside wall happens to be the location of the mural that is being currently painted. And when I went by, the artist was there, so I introduced myself and we chatted for a little bit. Her name is, it's hard to forget, it's Yu Cali. And I didn't really understand when she said it at first, but she said, "Think of Yu, California." So anyway, it was delightful to meet her. She's doing a wonderful job. If you get an opportunity, it's probably going to take another few weeks, but she's out there all the time painting that mural, and it is lovely. The other thing I wanted to mention is that since this is our last meeting until August, it might be too late in August to announce this, but it's kind of an open secret, but I did want to formally announce that I am not going to be running for reelection this fall. And I mention that because the filing period starts July 15. And so if there are more than, you know, a few people on Zoom or at home watching on TV and you're interested in running, we can always use good people to run for council. And I just want to say it's been the rite of my life, and I'll have more to say on reorganization night in December. But that's my announcement. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ron, and I believe I was aware of that, but you will certainly be missed here, and we'll be celebrating you probably most of the fall and winter here, so appreciate your long service to San Carlos.
I have a really long exit speech, so.
Very good, very good. We'll build that into the agenda now. Excellent. And I also appreciate your comments on our new mural. It's on the wall that Ron mentioned, and Yu Cali's great. That's our sister city alley, which I don't know how many people know that. I lived here a long time before I finally bumped into that plaque. But now that Wheeler Plaza's opened that up, it's become this beautiful opportunity for art, and I congratulate our community foundation for their leadership. They've been responsible for several murals in town. And on this one, they, number one, recruited an artist, Yu Cali. She's fantastic. She resides at Art Bias, which is one of the very largest art collectives in the Bay Area. That's right here in San Carlos, so that's great having her. But she, the foundation recruited her, and together they went and found an artist in our sister city in Japan, which is a suburb of Okinawa. And they, so the Japanese characters you see on that mural were actually from an artist in our sister city of Omura, is the name of the sister city. And anyway, I just think it's a great project, and two weekends ago, it was actually open to the community. So Yu Cali was nice enough to put numbers and colors up, and some of us got up there and were able to mostly paint in between the lines and participate, so I can forever grab a little ownership over one of the orange poppies over there. Anyway, just a fantastic community event, followed by a long table luncheon event, the longest table. It's just, anyway, just a shout-out to our community foundation for the work they do to build community here in San Carlos. And on that, I will also echo Ron, not just our council, but all of our commissions actually have openings right now. This is our recruiting season, so until August 2nd, if you go to our website, you can apply for our Planning Transportation Commission, our Economic Development Commission, and our Park Rec and Culture Commission all have openings, and we do need great people to step up, and our commissions have always had a lot of talent on it. And I will just say personally, it's local involvement's a wonderful antidote to the somewhat distressing national news cycle. Getting involved is a good thing, and this is a wonderful community to be involved in. So, oh, Councilmember Collins?
I just wanted to add one thing. Whether you're planning on running for council or applying for a commission, the person to see is Crystal Mui. She's right down at the end here. And come to City Hall, second floor, City Clerk's office, and she will give you all the information you want for any position that you're interested in applying for.
That's a great point, and I'm available as well if anyone just wants to chat with me. I've had a couple conversations in the past couple weeks about positions and what our commissions do, and always happy to have those conversations. So with that, we will move on and receive a presentation from Silicon Valley Clean Water on their long-range capital improvement projects. Welcome, Teresa.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan. Councilmembers, thank you for the invitation to come and speak here. Let's see, let's, yeah, see if I can do this. So I thought to talk about three things specifically, our strategic plan, some of our efforts towards sustainability, and finally go into a few of our larger capital improvement program projects. We just, and I do want to give a shout-out to Councilmember Collins, who serves on our commission, and we will miss you.
I'll miss you guys, Jill.
Yeah, you can always come and be a member of the public, I think, if you're nice. So anyhow, our five-year strategic plan was just approved earlier this year, and our motto is sustaining excellence. Our core priorities, we have three of them, safety, we say safety always, are meeting our regulatory mandates, and our stewardship towards the environment and public health. And then we also indicated two long-range initiatives, which is moving towards potable water reuse and energy neutrality at the treatment plant facility. And then talking about sustainability, some of the things that we're doing, so we are a wastewater treatment facility, and the opportunities we have with that are water, the solids that come in with the wastewater, and biogas that's a derivative of the treatment process. In the water arena, so as I noted, we are exploring potable reuse on the peninsula. We are part of Pure Water Peninsula, and our tagline is "Our Water, Our Future," and on the screen there is all the agencies that we are coordinating with. Silicon Valley Clean Water and City of San Mateo are the wastewater providers, and all the other partners are water purveyors. I'm sorry, City Foster City also, which feeds into San Mateo. Everybody else is a water agency, and we're partnering closely with them. On the solid side, so part of what comes in with the water are solids, and during the treatment process, we separate the water from the solids that come in. And we started a very innovative partnership with a company called Bioforce Tech. I invite people to go to their website, it's quite fascinating what they do. And they use biological methods to dry our biosolids and then put it through a perolysis, which is a very high-temperature process, and the output is 10% of what goes into it at a very low energy usage, and in fact, it's near-energy neutral, which we're really proud of. And the end result, which is biochar, is basically pure carbon and has a lot of uses for that. On the biogas front, currently, we produce electricity through two cogeneration engines. The energy we produce, we store in Tesla batteries and then use it during peak periods. Currently, we produce about 75% of the electricity that we use at the treatment plant. We are about to embark on being 100% self-sufficient using a new process, it's called a linear generator, so that will enable us to go down to one cogeneration engine, put in our linear generators, and get all the power that we need for running the treatment plant. And really excited about that. We have lower emissions from the linear generators, less than a five-year payback on its use, and very high efficiency, much more efficient than a cogeneration engine. So really proud of that effort moving forward. And then finally getting into some of our capital improvements, and I'll just touch on some of the things that we're doing as we embark on this next 10 years of capital improvements. And this was approved in February. What we do every time that we initiate a project is we look at the condition assessment of our facilities. We don't do a project unless it's needed. We sequence a project to make sure that we're using repair funds efficiently. We manage the projects to minimize cost overruns, and then there's various project delivery methods that we can use, including design-build, which minimizes cost and schedule. So here's some of our larger projects, starting with infrastructure rehabilitation. We have Sea Level Rise Resiliency Project, regulatory mandates, which I'll go into a little bit more, and then process efficiency. The first one is, the largest one is the last part of our conveyance system program, which is a 33-inch force main that brings water from Menlo Park to Redwood City. That was a newer pipeline. It doesn't need to be repaired yet. In 2022, it looked like we had a 10-year life remaining on it. And before we embark on doing anything, we'll do another evaluation, probably in two years, to see if we can push it out even more. We all know Sea Level Rise is a big concern. We did a levee repair in conjunction with the city of Redwood City. The red line shows we put in sheets to protect our treatment facility, and the sheets were dependent on a perimeter levy that was outboard of the sheets. And this is what the outboard levy looks like now. It's hard to tell on that picture on the left, but about halfway, about two-thirds of the way up, that's water coming through a hole that's gone into the area between the sheets and this outboard levy. And in that same picture on the left, you can see the very top, the levy used to be all the way out there, and so we have to do something to protect our treatment facility. This past year, we got water infiltrating into our treatment plant, which is not good. And lastly, I'm sure everybody's heard on the news about the algae blooms that happened in 2022, 2023. That's partly a result of nutrients that are discharged into the bay by treatment plants. We've been working with the Regional Water Quality Control Board since 2014, so about 10 years. And the water board always had been in alignment with us, that we follow the science to determine what and when something's needed to be done. So it was always a matter of not if, but when. Well, 2022, 2023, we had these algal blooms in the bay, and the water board was pressured, for good reason, to accelerate the timeframe for when treatment plants needed to do something. So there's 37 treatment plants within the Bay Area. Every single one of them are required to comply with nutrient permit limits. It's going before the regional board on July 10th, so in a couple weeks, and they are allowed to only have a 10-year implementation schedule. By mandate, they cannot put in a schedule longer than 10 years, so we have 10 years to implement nutrient reduction. And the Bay Area-wide costs, this is a 2019 number, the estimate now is about $14 billion Bay Area-wide, so it's a big deal. And our nitrogen reduction is higher than some of the other treatment plants at 65%. So one of the things we're doing as we approach nutrient removal is firstly developing a facilities plan to identify, be very strategic about what we do. We don't want to just throw money at this thing. We want to make sure that the money we do put into it is going to solve the problem. And part of the rehabilitation projects that I put in that table showing individual costs, will take some of the money from deferred rehabilitation, take some additional money towards nitrogen removal, and just, again, do it in the most strategic manner that we can. But this is a Bay Area-wide problem, and the Bay Area is going to solve it. And with that, I can answer any questions?
Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate that, and I enjoyed the ribbon-cutting last month out at our new facility. That was a nice event, so appreciate that, and I learned a lot, and saw a really big storage tank underground there.
Yeah, it was pretty impressive.
Yeah, and it looks like you have other interesting projects on the way. Do any of my colleagues have any questions of Teresa? Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Teresa, thanks so much for coming tonight. Two questions. I wanted to ask, do you currently test wastewater for viruses? I know several wastewater treatment facilities test for COVID. Are you doing that at yours?
We do, and we have since the start of COVID, and it's on our website, and I can actually give you a link to the Stanford site that does our analysis for us.
Oh, okay, okay. That's great to know. I didn't know that you did that. I've always been looking at Palo Alto data and didn't know that we could find it right here, so, thank you. And then I'm wondering, you had a slide on potable water reuse. Could you just, for the public's benefit, kind of talk about that a little bit, what that means, and how we're going to tackle that?
Sure. Last year, the state water board put out new regulations for potable reuse, and there's two types of potable reuse, indirect water reuse or a direct. And indirect, just imagine, we would send highly purified water, so it needs to go through an advanced purification facility after it comes out of our plant. Indirect use would go, we would, for example, discharge it to Crystal Bay, Crystal Springs Reservoir, which then goes through the reservoir and then into another water treatment facility before it's distributed to the water users. Direct potable reuse is we put the water through advanced water purification and directly into water distribution. So both of those are on the table. Both of those have new regulations by the state board. It's being done in a lot of places. California's been a little bit slower in implementing it, so we're looking at both possibilities.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions from my colleagues, I will just follow on to the vice mayor's question. So yeah, portable reuse, that might well be a political challenge, just we like our hetch-hetchy water and reuse water, even if it goes back through Crystal Springs. But we actually need guidance, because as it stands now, we still require many of our commercial builders to install purple pipe, and that's a burden. And, you know, what's kind of timeline do you think we would have to resolve whether we should maintain that requirement or abandon it, if it's going to be obsolete with potable reuse?
Well, as you note, the public information aspect of this is going to take a long time and for the public acceptance, especially for here with hetch-hetchy water. We are, San Francisco Water and Power PUC is our main project partner here, because they are the ones that manage hetch-hetchy water system. So realistically, we're looking at, I would say, at least 15 years before we get to a point where we're actually delivering water. So in the meantime, we do recycle water, we distribute it for landscape irrigation and toilet flushing, for example, and I would really encourage people to continue doing the purple pipe and using our recycled water.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that's helpful. I do not see any other questions, so thank you for your presentation.
Much appreciated.
Do we take public comment on presentations? Okay. Yeah, we will move on to comment on this item, which is the Silicon Valley Clean Water update to us. And just in general, if you're here to provide public comment, we would ask you to fill out a speaker card in the back corner. So we will take public comment and hand it into our city clerk, Crystal. We will take public comment now on the clean water item, and then we're going to move right into public comment. So if you're at home and want to comment, now's the time to raise your hand. But Crystal, do we have any public comment on this presentation item?
We don't have any public comment slips in person, but we do have a hand on Zoom.
Okay.
So I will allow Judy to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, if you're speaking on the Silicon Valley Clean Water presentation item.
Yes, I usually call on water issues to check and see if we're paying enough attention to the poison that the boomers are peeing into the water with their pharmaceuticals and turning our frogs gay.
All right. Yeah, that's out of order comment. You've been warned, you may continue your comment, but we will end your comment if you do not stay consistent with our policy on decorum.
Okay, well, I am worried about the water supply not being taken care of, and the problem with the water supply being linked to the power supply and the electric grid being so vulnerable that we might not have anything but our local water table, and if the boomers keep peeing all these drugs into the water supply, it's going to be our first case.
And that's the end of Zoom comment on this item. And yeah, I apologize for that. The way it works is, under state law, we have to give a warning and then allow them to continue, so that's what we did. We will now move on to item seven, public comment. If you have a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda, now is your time to raise your hand if you're on Zoom, or to present a speaker card to our city clerk and speak live. So this would be for items not on our agenda this evening. Do we have any speaker cards, Crystal?
Yes, we do. Let me go ahead and pull up the correct slide here. Okay. First slip is from Mark Olbert. Should say, former council member and former mayor, Mark Olbert.
Welcome, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor Dugan and the rest of the council, and Vice Mayor Sarah McDowell. I appreciate you giving me the time to address you tonight. I want to thank the city for keeping our community at the forefront of traffic management. The recent adoption of giving left turns at traffic lights priority has reduced travel times and added a new level of excitement to the driving experience, particularly for those drivers not familiar with the new rules, who mistakenly think going straight through a green light has the right of way. Recently, I found myself particularly impressed by a driver turning left on red who slipped-streamed behind the left turn on red driver in front of him. I said on red is actually going, you know, out of turn. I said on red is actually going, you know, out of turn. I think I spotted the second driver doing a victory fist pump as he went by. Regardless, a very impressive performance worthy of a racetrack. No doubt, this recent enhancement grew out of our multi-year effort to make most stop signs in the city optional. As with the left turn on red improvement, though, there are still some drivers and pedestrians who get confused by this behavior. To help them learn the new rules, perhaps you could get new stop signs made up and installed, which explicitly declare stopping to be optional. Again, thanks for reducing travel times and thanks for making driving our streets more exciting.
All right. Thank you, Mark. I think we will probably leave our stop signs as they are, but I'm glad you've noticed progress on our traffic signal circulation master plan, which I've made a priority of this year. So, thank you. All right. Any other public comment this evening?
I have two speaker slips, but I'm not exactly sure which agenda item they're interested in. Zara and Nadia. Crispie, thank you. So that is it for in-person for this section, and there are no public comments from Zoom.
Okay. Thank you, Crystal. Then that moves us on to our consent calendar. And would any of my colleagues like to pull something off our consent calendar for further discussion this evening?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Items A through P and item Q, adopting ordinance number 1616, an ordinance of the City of San Carlos amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 2.24.060, commissions length of service to add a provision allowing extension or reappointment of term-limited commissioners. And item R, adopting ordinance number 1617, an ordinance of the City of San Carlos amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 13.08.160, sewer service charges and fees established.
Still second it.
Very good. We have a motion and a second for our consent calendar items. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Benktesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes. Very good. Our consent calendar items are approved, which moves us on to item nine, new business, where we're going to consider adopting a resolution approving a master plan concept for our North Crestview Park. Amy, do we have a presentation this evening? Very good. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dugan, council members and community. My name is Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director, and I'd like to introduce and welcome up Todd Young from Verde Design, who will be going through the presentation this evening.
Hello, I'm Todd Young. I'm with Verde Design, and we've been working with the city and staff and the community to come together and come up with some concepts. And I'll walk you through what we've gathered on North Crestview Park. So our process is that we started out with a first effort, and that was a listening exercises where we met with the community to find out what were the hot buttons for the community, understand the park and do analysis of the site itself. Our goal was to come up with a preferred program of elements and understand, and understand the potential program elements. After that, we came out to the community with two concepts based on that information, a concept A and concept B, and then refined additionally preferred concept elements. That was followed by where we were last at, which was a composite effort, where we took those ideas, tried to composite the best possible plan from the feedback from the community on concepts A and B, and you'll see those today. So we started off in January with our first community effort. We had a pop-up. We also did surveys online for about two weeks. Then we did the alternatives, and we also had a survey with that. So we got feedback both in-person and online. And then the preferred plan went to the PRCC Commission, and we got their feedback in the beginning of this month. Here we are today. We are going to follow this up with environmental review on the site, which will include all of the elements that are required for understanding the site and its impact in the environment. So the purpose of the project is really to, to understand this last, I believe, undeveloped space and within the city's parks and recreation plan and to use this site to be developed. Originally, it was, I believe, purchased by the city in '74. It remained in San Carlos, and then there was a passive use master plan in 2017. And then last year, council decided that we should reevaluate and look more strategically at using this to provide more amenities to the community. So we do understand that this was originally a land acknowledgement, that this area was the Aloney ancestral lands. Also, in San Carlos, in this area, the city has a history of having a facility for World War II dog training, and that, that area was occupied from, I believe, '42 to '45. A little idea as to where we are geographically, our park is at the top on North Crestview. We're surrounded by open space on one side, residential around us. A little more detail, you can see our adjacency to some residential parcels, both to our north, our south, and also on to the east side. The site is filled with slopes. So in the beginning, here's a little analysis. We did a kind of look at the site itself to see how it could be developed and where the most practical places for development are. So along the street, it's a very steep slope of 20% to 30%. Then it lessens as you get to the top, with the top being the most developable space with the most level opportunities. Also, we were looking at the distribution of existing trees and other natural amenities of the site when we were doing, going through this effort. This was all brought to the community as part of the analysis in the original listing plan. So we were pretty successful of the listing. We had, our outreach survey reached out to 476 participants. Our listening meeting was, was in January, and it had about 36 participants. And there was also a pop-up done downtown where there was 20 or more people who had weighed in and given us their impression. Then the follow-up was the different alternatives. At that point, we had 237 people online participate, and about 45 people participated in our in-person meeting. As a result of that, you can see our little target here. We analyze that information, and then we decipher it. We meld the information together so that in in-person or survey online, they all get equal opportunity and equal voice. What came out of that was a primary theme of nature and wildlife. And then secondary themes that were discussed at the meetings and also online were veterans' memorial honoring the service dogs, the Aloney heritage. And also came up through the community was Observation Plaza that may talk about the earth and the sky. Top activities included a multi-use meadow, climbing events, fitness course, and multi-use courts. The top amenities that were brought up were restrooms and shade structures. And social spaces were picnic areas, community tables and dining spaces, and informal seating and hillside seating. The top play activities were nature play, climbing and swinging. And we used all this data to implement onto the offerings in the concepts. So that was then forwarded into those concepts. Here's what the original concepts were that we reached out to the community with. This is one layout with the elements over to the left. And what we have here is a large multi-use lawn or meadow that's got a loop trail around it. We arrive coming up a driveway and have a drop-off plaza with the multi-use court at the top of it. And then down below would be the play area in that blue tone. Restroom is located here. Very similar amenities are also offered in the next plan, which is this one right here, except on this one, the multi-use court was dropped and a larger play area at the top was facilitated by doing that. So when we look at the results from online and add them all together, we found that our community was pretty much split 49 to 51. But there was a slight preference to, to option A, which is the one that had the sport court on it. So we've moved forward with that. And here is composite option A overall. This is where we are today. This is what we presented, similar to what we presented to the PRCC. Option A is a loop trail around the large meadow, native planting, which you see in the darker green. We've preserved most of the hillside along the steep slopes where that light green color is. The buffers for wind and also to respect our neighbors have tree buffers to either of our parcel boundaries to the, to the north and to the south. We have in this plan an Aloney land acknowledgement plaza, which is in the upper left-hand corner of the meadow loop. And then we also have here the observation deck, which is to the right of the fitness court, where you see that blue square. The blue square is the fitness court. And to the right of that would be a place where you can have a vista towards the bay, and that's where we could do the land, that's where we can have the earth and the sky. So you can look at the geography of the bay from that point. The fitness zone already pointed out, you can see that there is a structure in the entry plaza, that's the restroom. Shaded picnic, one of the things that came up was shade by trees was also very popular. So we have a group picnic area in the middle of the plaza. We have three picnic zones under trees that are looking over the meadow. And then we have individual picnic that are going around the loop trail. We'll go on to show you a little more detail, so you can see it with some, some call-outs. You can see here the play area in the upper left-hand corner. We can see some of the native habitat that's being protected in the dark green color. I also want to point out that loop trail then takes you around to the bottom of the loop trail, and that's where we have the veterans' recognition or veterans' plaza. That is an area which has nice views, but it's also nestled up against the existing trees. So you've got a sense of privacy, but you also have the views that are available to you. And that's taking advantage of both the vistas towards the bay, but also using the natural slope of the meadow to incorporate some seating on the hillside there. So that gives you an opportunity to have that as a little special place where you can have a small little grouping, or you can expand and take into the meadow as an overflow space as well. Then coming around from that, as I go around the clock of the, of the loop, you see the individual picnic areas. Then past that peak, you come back down. The reasonable peak is there is to, to respect the existing trees and preserve as many of them as we can. That takes us to the earth and sky plaza, then the fitness zone, and then back around to the main plaza. In the main plaza, you can see the restroom, and then there is a big frontage there. So let me go to the composite option B. This is overall. You can see the difference here is we've got the multi-use court at the top and the play area at the bottom, and the fitness court is provided on both of those, and most of the other amenities have remained the same. So it's only a slight difference between the two. And this is where we went to the PRCC and asked them if there's a preference between one or the other. One of the downsides of this is there's an existing tree or two, actually three, that, that is required to be taken down in order to facilitate the multi-use court. Here's an enlargement of that. You can see the multi-use court in the image on the upper right-hand corner. That's, so it'll facilitate basketball, futsal, or some soccer games as well. So it's a good flexible court. To the left of that would be the fitness court. And then below that is the main plaza with the group picnic area, the individual picnic area, and then the play area down below, similar to what we had before. One of the things that was the trade-off is we do have the multi-use court, but we don't have the earth and sky plaza in this. But we have maintained the veterans' plaza with the overflow space. So as part of the outreach, when we did the survey, we asked the community, is there anything that's not in the program that we've already covered that you'd like to see as part of the community? And what came up is 123 people responded to this, 114 people skipped this question. But this word cloud that you see here, community pool, was number one, and right behind that was pickleball. So those were two items that the community brought to us that was outside of our programming stages that they were saying that we wanted to address. So we took a look at the community pool and see how that would work out. So if we did a community pool, this would be a very minimal improvement. It'd be a six-lane pool with a building that would facilitate, you know, staff, lifeguards, pump stations, community room, restroom, and then the deck for the pool itself. We have 36 parking spaces allocated to this. As part of this, we still have some of the other items, such as pollinator garden. We've preserved the hillside grasslands. We've done the driveway up similar. We have walkways that go from the Crestview Drive up to the, up to the facility. So those have remained pretty much the same. But this would be a minimum level of improvement to get a pool facility up here. This, we estimate, would be probably around $8.5 million on top of the park costs that we would have for all the site planning. So we were just taking a look to see the feasibility of this. When we did go to the PRCC, they did vote for this option. It was a three members in favor of this option, two members in favor of the other option, and no one from the PRCC was in favor of the pool at this location. But let me go through the PRCC recommendation. So this has been, it has been finessed a little bit for the PRCC per their comments. The multi-use court is at the upper top, the fitness zone is to the left. We've got the play area for 2 to 5 and 5 to 12 down below. We've preserved some of the natural native areas. We've also enhanced some of the native areas. We have the loop, the veterans' plaza, and a nice driveway up with two circulation routes up, drop-off at the Crestview Drive, and also the on-street parking that's already existing at Crestview Drive down at the bottom. We'd have monumentation and signage to get you up there, understand where you're going and where you are. Here's an enlargement of the developed area, where you can see here a little more clearly the fitness zone, the multi-use court, the veterans' plaza, the play area, et cetera, loop trail. And this is, this is what was recommended by the, by the PRCC. You can see here, we have preserved trees and we have new trees also. The lighter green, the yellow trees are the existing trees, and the other trees are the new trees that are being added to the project. And just to recap, the PRCC voted three members for option B, two members for option A, and none for the pool. And here you can see the comparison between what we presented A and B and what their final If there's any questions?
Yeah, terrific. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate the process that was used by our Park and Rec Department and Verde, and just I was at most of those outreach sessions and lively discussions with our community. And I know there's a lot of thoughts on this one, so looking forward to our discussion this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so I think what we'll do tonight is, let's do two rounds of questions from, from, I think we probably all have quite a few questions. Let's do two rounds with my colleagues. Let's try to keep it to maybe two each on each of the rounds, and then, then we'll move on to our public comment, and then we'll move on from there to our discussion. So do any of my colleagues have any questions of staff this evening? Councilmember Rack? I'm sorry, Councilmember Collins, your hand was up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, Amy and Todd. I really only have a couple of questions to begin with. When you talk about a fitness zone, how should we think of that? What is meant by a fitness zone?
Sure. So the image that you see there is based off of a fitness zone from the National Fitness Campaign. It's been installed in, originally it was in San Francisco.
Yeah, first one was in the Marina District.
Yeah, Marina Greens. And they're now kind of coming up in other communities. Foster City has one. They just installed one at the Redwood City, Redwood Shores Library. And so it is an app-based fitness zone where they have different areas of fitness that someone can, on their phone, just go through their exercises on their own.
It also is a grassroots, so they have like monitors or they have volunteers that come in, and you could get a group of people to do circuit training like that. It has machines that are made for outdoor use along a wall, and then it has boxes for exercise. And then it has boxes for exercises so you can do some other types of exercise. But it is designed to reach out to the community, to be a grassroots type of event, and to try and engage more of the community at different age levels as well, teens to seniors.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is I noticed that there's existing and new trees up toward the back of the area. I walked there last week and I noticed that there were a lot, very few trees along the actual fence. And I'm just wondering if part of the thinking is that there would be more trees closer to the fence. And the reason I say that is that it gets quite windy up there and I'm thinking that they could act as a windscreen for the rest of the area. Has that been incorporated?
I really appreciate you bringing up the idea of wind because it was brought up in the community outreach process. And one of the things we've done is we're using this site grading to our advantage. So all of the walls that are facing towards the ridge are sunken. We have retaining walls so that, for instance, the sport court is below the, is below natural grade. And we've got a cut there so that we are protecting both the children in the play area from the wind by dropping it in elevation. Same thing with those fitness areas. But the, the wind and the trees, yes, that's something that we could certainly consider adding more street, more of a screen from that top ridge. I think that that would actually show no, no problems as far as nature and the confluence of wildlife.
I may have one or two more, but I'll, I'll hold for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. I appreciate that. And I'm actually going to jump in with what I think is kind of a threshold question. You know, you, you put a design like this in front of us and we start wanting to design things particularly, but this isn't a design exercise. This is a conceptual exercise. And could you just speak briefly on what it is to have a concept in front of us? And then how will this get translated to a particular design?
Sure, I can answer. And then Todd, if you want to step in. So very conceptual design of what are, as Todd mentioned as he went through the presentation, what are these amenities that we want to see at this park site? The restroom building, the picnic structures, and what play amenities and recreation amenities. Should a plan get selected tonight? We finalize the plan and it is approved by council down the road once we finish CEQA and council wants to fund a design, then we get into the details of what actual play equipments are in the playground and what is, how many trees are we going to plant along that back ridge line? The multi-use court, what specific games and activities do we want on that court so that we can line it appropriately? And it reengages the community through that process, restarts the community input for those specific design elements. And it will come back to the commission and it would come back to council.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. That's helpful. So we don't have to solve everything tonight. That's good to know. Very good. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your work on this. I think I'm going to address the elephant in the room, which is this pool. And our community got real excited about this pool. But can you explain to us, I know why there's not parking, it's up a steep hill, it's windy, but I think we need to explain to our community the reason for choosing option A and B.
Sure. And maybe I'll just kind of go through the pool site, some observations I have. You know, as you're familiar, we are kicking off our Parks Master Plan project. We have our site visit with our consultants this Friday where we'll be engaging the community on a whole Parks Master Plan. And that's something that we've heard from the community for many years is the idea of having a community pool. Through my conversations with different community members is the pool that's designed and planned here, this conceptual pool, I'm not sure if it meets the desires of the community where it is just a six-lane pool. It doesn't have a splash pad play zone. It doesn't have a top pool where, you know, you see in those communities, those early lessons. So I see that as maybe some of the challenges of this site. However, that is something we continue to hear from the community and something that I'm sure will come up through the Parks Master Plan process again.
I, I'd just add one thing to that as well. I think one of the things you see in communities that have community-style swimming pools, very popular in kind of the pre-teen, early teen age group. And, you know, this particular location I think would be more challenging than some other potential locations we're looking at for that age group to be, who is beginning their independence in the community and, and, you know, mom and dad are comfortable with them starting to go out and do those types of activities on their own. This would be a more difficult location for that age group to access.
And then can you just explain the rationale between choosing option A over B with the votes?
Sure. I mean, the commission, we had a lengthy conversation with the commission of looking at concept A and B. And as Todd mentioned, it was a three, two vote in favor of concept B as opposed to concept A. When it came down to it, we look at the multi-use court as an opportunity of providing equitable parts, parks in our community and recreation amenities and having a full-size basketball court, or having an opportunity to do a soccer game up there, just informal neighbors coming together or community coming together. That was kind of just one of the determining factors in, in that conversation of the majority of the commission recommending this option.
Thank you. Those are my two questions.
All right. Thank you, Pranita. Appreciate that. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan. Todd, Amy, thanks for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. I guess my, so the one, you know, we've been working on sort of the trail aspect of the, you know, parks and doing more trail access. And we recently opened the gate at Los Vientos to access Pulgas Ridge. And, you know, we're, we have an objective of working with the SFPUC about maybe getting access to the area to the west of, of St. Carlos. So I just want to make sure that we're sort of in this design that we would, should we get access at some point to get trail access, we would, we're not prohibiting it with either any of these designs.
So we, we have no plan now, but we were thinking about future use. And so from where you see the land acknowledgement plaza would be an avenue that we could continue up and go into the open space there for a future, if it should, if it should come up. So it doesn't prevent it. None of, none of the options really prevent that. It would be from the same location, same kind of place where we would extend up into another space.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is I know that sort of you've got multi-use courts versus pickleball courts. And I read sort of in the, you know, from the, what the pickleball community was sort of, they prefer sort of more condensed group of six, four, six courts so they can sort of, since it's more of a communal, social sport. Can you, and so this would be, the current view on this would be more of a basketball, multi-use court ball sport, whatever kind of thing. And then just so I understand from, you know, with pickleball, we have, how many pickleball courts do we have now in the city? And how many tennis courts do we have now in the city?
Pissing me, Adam.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm going to put you on the spot.
We have two dedicated pickleball courts at Crestview Park. We have four dedic, multi-use pickleball courts at Highlands Park. At Highlands Park, we have five tennis courts. Two of those courts are then the multi-lined with pickleball. And at Burton, we have three courts.
Okay. And then what about Arguelo? What is a?
Arguelo, still managed by the school district, is four courts? Four courts at Arguelo.
Okay. Understood. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. So we could, at some point, if we were able to get more access to Arguelo, we could, we could, as part of the master plan, we might be able to look at how to do more of that, given that sort of this, this doesn't make sense for, for here, it seems like.
Yeah, that was a lot of feedback we heard from the pickleball community was that they love the courts at Highlands and there is dedicated pickleball time. And a lot of those times that they come to play, there can be 16 to 20 or more people waiting to rotate onto those courts. And so their ideal situation is to have four or more dedicated pickleball courts so that they can have that rotation play. So what was specked on this court, if we included pickleball lines, would be three, again, like multi-lined pickleball, which then just doesn't accomplish what their need is in that community. So that was a huge factor in why we took that off of the conceptual design and focused on basketball and soccer or other kind of court games.
Great. Thank you. That's super helpful. I'll hold back for my other questions.
Thank you, Adam. Appreciate that. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was trying to find the slide that I wanted to ask about. Slide nine on the outreach and participation. I just, I know that you guys were trying to be very responsive to the community when a bunch of, you know, ideas came through the survey about the pool. Was the pool presented in any of the listening sessions or the workshops with the community? Or was that kind of a late add and?
So the pool came up through the second phase of outreach on the online survey, which followed the second community workshop. And then it was presented at the Parks Recreation and Culture Commission meeting earlier this month on June 5th as part of the presentation.
Okay. So it wasn't part of the community outreach meetings?
No.
Okay. Thank you. And then my other question, I just wanted to kind of talk about cost. And I was actually surprised at the costs that were listed tonight with the pool because I, I know pools are really expensive. So I'm, I'm wondering if you could just give a little more, you know, color to, you know, if, if the pool is much more costly because we do have operational costs and running the pool versus the other two options? And then how much money is in our Park and Lou fund? And how, as we think about budgeting, is that money already in an account or how do you, how do you see that playing out?
So we'll start at concept B. Cost estimate is just about $7.5 million. To build the pool, it would be an additional $8.5 million. So that 7.5 is a lot of the site improvements, which are also happening at the pool concept. But the pool and deck are roughly 1.5 million, and then the building itself would be $7 million. So double the cost of concept B, we'll say. Operations of a pool run approximately a million dollars a year, from what I understand. And then in response to your question about our budget, we do currently have $500,000 set aside in our capital improvement program budget in fiscal year 2025, '26 for design. But that is not going to cover the entire cost of design. I can already say that design would be more than that in looking at either of these options. And then we have $9 million set aside on the unfunded list that, to earmark for this site improvement. Again, on the unfunded list, so not budgeted. And then in the Park and Lou fund, not more than, I don't, I don't know if you have any idea. It's not more than $2 million. It might be 1.5.
I'm not sure what the fund balance is currently of the, the Park and Lou fund, but there's no capital construction money currently budgeted for any project at North Crestview. It's currently, we have the design money beginning to be budgeted, but the project, which I think is estimated, we estimated it at $9 million, is on the unfunded list right now. Of course, waiting to start to get to this point where you're selecting, you know, types of options so we can refine those estimates.
It might be 1.5 in Park and Lou fund.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just add in terms of operating costs, in addition to the, in addition to the, the operating costs of, of running the pool, you're probably going to be looking at probably close to an additional half million in terms of insurance. They're, they're very expensive to insure for communities.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a couple here. So if we could go back to slide 21, oh, thank you. And so I was glad to see, this called out as a veterans and service recognition. I absolutely appreciate our history of the war dogs and the contribution of the Pacific Theater to World War II. And, and the placement of this is, really honors that, which is terrific. But as a community, we also haven't really worked through the type of veterans memorial that a lot of our neighboring communities have. And, you know, I have perceived this as an opportunity for that. So I'm glad it sounds, you know, in our packet, that wasn't really made clear, but by seeing veterans and service recognition here, that's contemplated to be a veterans memorial as well as recognition of, of war dogs?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. And as I've, I, you know, I am a veteran. I've been to a number of veterans memorials. They usually take up a little bit of room. They're more in the sculpture kind of three-dimensional aspect to them. This concept, I know we're not designing here tonight, but this seems to imply like a leaning wall and plaques on the wall. You know, is it appropriate at the concept level to provide a little more room or otherwise integrate it to the walking trail there? So it's suggestive of an actual memorial?
Absolutely. That's, this is the, the master plan phase and we can finesse this. What's nice about this is the views, the vistas, and also the opportunity to engage with the overflow space. So the siding of it, I think, is, is really leaning towards your vision. And yes, we can elaborate on it further.
Terrific. I appreciate that. And yeah, I really do like the terrace seating and how it blends into what, you know, I think could be a really interesting meadow and all the ways our community will, you know, go fly kites or have picnics or otherwise enjoy the fantastic views up there, which kind of brings me to my next set of thoughts. And, you know, you look at a park plan, you want to see a lot of trees. And, you know, I just hope we're, as we work through the specifics of that and the placement, that we recognize this park is so special because of the views. And as much as we all like trees, we want to be really thoughtful on species selection so we're not blocking a lot of these views in the next, you know, 10, 20 years as these things grow up. So I assume we will engage on that pretty deeply in the process. And so that similar question, just the, the observation deck, I noticed, didn't make the cut here, which is kind of a loss because this is a real special area at the very top of our community. It has the big view to the west. It can, you know, I've, I've, I've seen stargazers out at Crestview Park already pretty regularly. I think there's a club that meets up there. And I'm just wondering, it didn't seem like a big add. Could that still fit in this concept? I know there's a risk of trying to add everything, but I think that would be a loss to lose that at this park because that, that really is particularly suited to this park.
I think it is a, it is a great opportunity. It came strictly from the community outreach. It was their idea. They brought it to the table. So we tried to respect it as much as possible. The area that we were going to use it before is now being used for the play area. And if we moved it over, we've got blockage of the trees, which you've already identified. However, trying to problem solve this, if we move it over closer to the plaza, south of the bathroom and above the, above the drive, you could look over the drive and look it to, towards the, towards the bay. And that would be an area that we could use that plaza space at the very entrance for that same purpose. So it could be, it could be integrated in in that way.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I would, as we get into it, suggest maybe a bit more outreach to that community because maybe they'd want to be at the very top of the hill, maybe on the other side of the meadow, just where it's, you know, most open for stargazing. But I don't know that, you know, we just, if we're going to place it somewhere, we should ask them. And I'm glad to hear there might, might be room for that. So thank you. Those are my questions. Does anyone else have more questions for round two? Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed that you've called it a universal play area. Again, I'm wondering, does that include, you know, preschool tots? Will, would have equipment for them? I realize also that people like my grandchildren may be aged out of, out of the usage of these things. But I'm just curious, for, for future residents and children, what does a universal play area mean and what kind of equipment would it encompass?
Let me dive into that a little bit. So we have a compressed play area here. It's not a huge space, but what we do have and what universal access to me and our team as we're designing it is to provide as many opportunities for people with all different levels of mobility and all different times of, of emotional and, and social behavior requirements. So for that reason, we try to target certain play activities, events, and make sure that accessibility is carried through above and beyond the minimum required in California. So on here, we are trying to target a composite play structure that is for five to 12-year-olds, that it would be completely wheelchair accessible via ramps so that none of the platforms are areas that are denied access by people who are on mobility devices. So So, that is one area that we're trying to achieve. The other is, we have an imagination play for the two to five play area, for the two to five age group. And then we have some bouncers and rockers and spring toys for that age group. And then we also have spinner toys. We're looking at this right now, thinking that it could be something like a merry-go-round, or one of those climbing structures where there's ropes and it spins. So, you get certain activities, it hits a certain target group of users when you're spinning activities. And we also have the other rocking and bouncer for the younger age group. So, we're trying to reach out to as much of the community as possible in this condensed space.
Okay. Thank you. That was all I had.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate that. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan. I had one comment I just want to share with Councilmember Collins, is, I've been to the fitness wall over at Redwood Shore's Library, and it's a really neat concept. I think it'd be, it's a nice fit. We don't have anything like this in town. I think it'd be a nice addition. I definitely recommend checking it out. My, the question I have is on looking at sort of the two different, if I, the two different concepts for the play area. So just looking at both options. I don't know where that...
This, oh. Is it at the end?
Yeah. We'll find it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, how, and then, the overall difference in the size of the space is, is how much? A few hundred feet? Or is it more than that?
1,500 square feet difference between A and B. A is about seven, over 7,000 or 7,000 square feet, and B is...
Actually, it's about 1,000. It's 1,000 square feet difference in the play area size, between the two.
And then, but you've also, and that includes sort of the tree you have in the middle up top, or is that...
That's correct. That tree is one of the existing trees, and we were trying to design around it to preserve it. So between A and B, one of the features is, you can see there are two trees in A that are then being used for the development of the space in B. So we've lost those two trees. But we did gain about, just about 1,000 square feet in play area. In functionality...
So the option A has a larger play area, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, I had two sort of questions related to that. One is, from a design standpoint, if you're looking at, you know, from a, integrated in the park in terms of wind, or, or sort of accessibility and everything, is one better than the other from your perspective?
I would say it's a toss-up. They're very similar.
Okay. And in terms of the larger one versus the B option, does B become too cramped to try to fit everything that you want in there? And, and is, or would you say, gosh, if I had A, I could get all this stuff in here that I really would, would make this a really great play area?
I would love to say that one of these options gives the play area a much more generous footprint, but they don't. As far as actually using and programming the space, they're very similar. And the difference is really, you get an opportunity with the multi-use court that you didn't have before, but the play value in both of them are extremely similar.
Great. Thank you very much. That's really helpful.
Very good. Thank you, Adam. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're on the play area, I'm sure you've looked at this, but looking at a map, I'm looking at the play area, I'm looking at the road ahead. And, I don't know about your kids, but my kids like to run. And I'm just looking at safety on this location.
Thank you for letting me pontificate on that. So, the play area is actually raised above the driveway. So there's a retaining wall that's facing the driveway, the play area is above, there is not access, and it will be fenced in. And all of these plans, as part of universal access, we like to have limited access points, so that caregivers can only watch one point. And second, we always have them, whether they know it or not, it's fenced, or there's some kind of screen or barrier between them in the play area and outside the play area.
Thank you, Pranita. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being so thoughtful in these plans. I could tell that a lot of work has gone into this. My first question is the interrelation between the trees and the parking, because the parking seems very limited. And I'm wondering, you know, have we studied these trees to make sure that they're healthy and worth preserving? I too walked the site for quite a while, and I don't know, you know, I, I know that we want to preserve the trees, and we have our heritage tree ordinance, but if some of these trees are, you know, not healthy, or very young, I personally, I'm concerned about the lack of parking. So maybe we could tackle that.
So, we did originally have a plan that did not have a turnaround. It came from the community that, that was, it would be preferred that if we had a more fluid parking configuration. And so we took another look at that. We were trying to preserve this one oak tree that's in the center, but for turnaround purposes, emergency vehicles, we have to have that diameter for the turnaround anyway. So for that reason alone, we just located it opportunistically around that tree. In order to get more spaces, I think we're going to be doing two things. It is possible, but one is, we'd be increasing our retaining wall height significantly as we move further towards the residential. And then, just as I'm saying, the residential proximity was the other reason why that circle with full parking spaces was not shown on the plan. It is possible to put more there, but if you can see the grades, the existing grades there, that's a big drop-off going down. So that's where we would have some more significant retaining wall systems. And plus, we would be breaking some of that screening barrier between us and our neighbors.
Okay. So, so that I understand that, so the, I see the roundabout, that area that's kind of pushed in, that's because the parking would have been too close to the residential neighbors? Okay.
Two-fold, too close to the neighbors, and also, the retaining wall heights would be over 12 feet.
And then the second part of that question, have we looked at the trees, and if they're healthy enough to preserve?
Only visually. We have not had an arborist review the trees and, and check their status.
Okay. Yeah. Go ahead, Amy.
That is something that, if we don't have in our tree inventory, we can come out and do that.
Oh, I see. Okay. Yeah, I'm just a little bit concerned, because we are building this plan quite a bit around the trees. And, you know, I think many of us have talked tonight about trade-offs, and how big the playground is, and things like that. So, it's something to keep in mind. Okay, that's, I guess, two questions, so thank you. It turned out to be more than my one question.
Well, thank you, Sarah. You can borrow one of mine, or we'll get back to it. The, and I appreciate this view of A versus B, and thank you, Adam, for pointing out how, you know, we, the play areas aren't dramatically different in function, but in Option B, we do get the multi-use court. I would just also point out, it's true that in Option B, that looks like a larger fitness zone area, too. Is that right?
The fitness court itself is the same, however, the plaza that it's in is expanded. We thought that there might be, you know, a Tai Chi, or a yoga, or some other amenities that would be able to use that additional space. Instead of carving it out and making it unusable, we just took advantage of the opportunities.
Very good. Yeah, I like that. And I think, to the left of it, that would look to be a natural place to put the access to some future trail into the sea piece, you know, the, the water districts land there. Yeah. Okay. And then, you know, I strongly support a Alone land acknowledgement in San Carlos. I, you know, I think that's a worthy thing. I'm not aware of any in our neighboring communities. We don't have one in San Carlos, and, you know, we definitely have a lot of heritage and history here. I, just am wondering what we went through to decide to place it here. You know, I guess it's a couple-layered question, you know, does, is, is there a particular reason this is the right park in San Carlos for this? Is next to the, the multi-use court the right place for something like this? Did we consult with, I know we've recently consulted with Native American tribal authorities on a placement of, you know, Native American remains. Were they at all consulted on, on placement here? Those are my questions about this.
I'm going to talk about the community outreach process. So when we went through that, we were throwing out ideas. What could be our themes? What could we highlight? What is the character of the community that we want to bring to the, to this park? And the Alone came in as one of the items, did not rank very high, but all of them were up, there were, there was nature, and then there was everything else underneath it. And they were, there were lots of votes for all of them, but they didn't really one balance out higher than the other. So that's why we incorporated it into the plan. As far as the location of the plaza, what we've done is, we've located, so you're overlooking the meadow. So the idea is that you would be in the main circulation area, where there's a hub of energy, and you would be able to then highlight with educational signage. And then, I do know that, when we first met with the city, and staff, and parks, and recreation, that we did talk about some of the programs that they have, and I'll let you. You...
Sorry.
Okay. I'll remind, I'll remind you. So there was an idea that the community did not have any kind of recognition, and that the city was looking for a potential location for something like this. Then when it taps into the community, and I believe that, uh... What's her name in the map?
Andrea?
Yeah. I believe Andrea had some kind of communications already, and that we have not gone through that process, we have not connected to the tribal elders in any way, but we were talking about, there are some connections that we could harvest to try and bring that forward as the plan develops, if we, if we go forward with Alone Plaza.
Got it. I appreciate that. And I know when there's kind of an open plan, that's the chance to, you know, design and think through everything. I know, we're, you know, packing a lot in here, and, you know, it's just an open question. I don't need an answer. We can maybe talk about it later tonight. You know, we have so many other parks in town, and there's probably a lot of places that might even be more suggestive of, of, you know, how the land looked when, when the Alone were here, that, you know, I just wonder if this is the best place in San Carlos for this recognition, so. Did Park &amp; Rec staff think about that at all, or like, could this be in another park?
Yeah. I mean, I think there's definitely opportunity to have this in a different park, and we looked at including it here, just as this is a current project that's going forward, and it's something that we haven't recognized in the community in our parks. So just kind of use this as an opportunity, but definitely, as you mentioned, maybe looking at a different site in the community where this can be more prevalent, or just tie more to the native Alonies that were here.
I appreciate that. I just think it's worth us thinking through, that's all. So, thank you. Yeah, well, that was two rounds of very good questions, so I appreciate that. So there might be more questions from us, but now let's hear from our community. So we'll move on to public comment on this item, and if you would like to speak here in person, please do fill out a speaking card and get it turned in. And if you're at home, now would be the time to raise your hand on Zoom. But let's take our live commenters first. Crystal?
Okay. We have 13 speaker slips for in-person. First up is Dr. Charlene Edinburgh. You'll be followed by Dr. Arlene Bitsman, sir.
Good evening, everyone, and council members, and Mr. Mayor. This is the third round, at least, of us looking, of San Carlos looking at doing something in this location. The last time, it was agreed that a passive use plan was the best, and for some reason, that wasn't developed. So here we are again, a lot of money spent. I am a native of San Carlos. I would like San Carlos to have a natural space after you develop this. You can't undevelop it. I wonder why any of this is necessary. I want to list a great number of the animals, species, that I've seen right there. I live just next, near the park. Many, many species of animals. Insects, lizards, rodents, rabbits, foxes, coyotes. We also have bobcats and mountain lions, all kinds of animals. This park is used as a thoroughfare for animals going from the open space down into Devonshire Canyon. If you do all of this, how's that impact the animals? I think it's important that we keep this natural area natural. That's what we had agreed to before on multiple occasions. That's even what came up in the community meetings. That's not what the designers came up with. We had some conversation about all of that. And then there's the impact to the geology and the geography of the area. And consider, there's a flat park right across the street, so if you're going to do a whole lot of construction, use that. I think another speaker is going to talk about that. And then finally, we need security up there. You can't see the top of North Crestview Park from Crestview Drive. We had a firecracker there just the other day, called the sheriff, nobody ever came. Like to say, let's spend some money on our local policing. That's a combination of comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ninsborough. Oh, Edinburgh.
Dr. Arlene Bitsman, sir, and you'll be followed by Andrew Bitsman, sir.
Before I start the comments that I prepared, I just wanted to make sure that the property lines for the Crestview Estates HOA are observed. I called today to get a map or a description of the property line, so both from the Zelia side and the Chicory side. It's not all North Crestview Park. There's some of it that belongs to the HOA. So, we've discussed those in our board meetings in the past, but I can't tell you an exact location. That would need to come from the property manager. So that's one thing. As a biologist, tonight I wanted to talk about the importance of preserving our natural landscapes, and very much end with the comments that Charlene just made. And I would like to see them left untouched in pristine form. In an era where we have urban development and human expansion at an all-time high, it is crucial to remember the valuable role that natural habitats play in maintaining ecological balance and, and supporting the wildlife. Natural landscapes are not just picturesque sceneries. They are complex ecosystems that provide a home to countless species of plants. Charlene mentioned a lot of the species. There's also deer, cotton-tailed jackrabbits, wild turkeys, all of them, I have pictures and videos, they come passing by, because I, I live right next to the hill. All of these would lose their home when we turn this natural hill into a concrete parking lot, or a concrete-developed park. So when we encroach in these areas, we disrupt the delicate balance of nature, leading to the displacement and endangerment of many of these species. San Carlos has ample urban development in the flat areas, but in the hills, there are some sparse areas of untouched nature. The decision to turn nature into a concrete parking lot or playground is an anathema to our heritage as conservationists and our beloved environment. I guess my time's up, so thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Andrew Bitsman, sir, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Rich Erhart.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Ever since the unfortunate closure of our 36-person police department, to save money, our community has faced severe challenges in maintaining safety and order. The decision to replace a robust police force with just three contracted sheriffs has proven to be inadequate and detrimental to the well-being of our town. Three sheriffs, no matter how dedicated, simply cannot meet the demands of a community the size of San Carlos. These officers are stretched too thin, covering vast areas with very limited resources. The inevitable result is a significant delay in response times. As Charlene mentioned as an example the other day, many residents have reported that sheriffs do not arrive when called, leaving citizens feeling vulnerable and unprotected. The city promised that the sheriffs would provide safety surveillance of North Crestview Park, yet in recent weeks, calls reporting loud explosions, illegal dirt bike riding, and illegal smoking in the park have gone unanswered. This unresponsiveness is alarming and is unacceptable, especially since the San Carlos hills faces wildfire threats. Instead of focusing on the safety of San Carlos residents, that the emphasis has been on redundant urban development, which is... on redundant urban development, which would invite only more dangerous and illegal activity. Transforming our natural hills into concrete parks not only destroys the environment, but also exacerbates the problems San Carlos residents are already facing due to insufficient policing. Our community values its natural spaces and the peace they bring. Turning these areas into overdeveloped, concrete-heavy zones will strip away the charm and safety of San Carlos. We should focus on preserving our natural landscape and ensuring adequate law enforcement to protect it rather than invite more trouble with unnecessary development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich, you are up next, and you'll be followed by Tom Morse.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Rich Erhart. I received a call from the mayor last week in reference to the naming of this park. I'm the commanding officer of American Legion Post 585. Been doing that for 12 years. And our American Legion post here was incorporated in March of 1941, nine months before the war. We built our building in 1950, it was dedicated then. In front of our building is a monument. It's a flag monument dedicated to the veterans, men and women who have given their all. That is a monument. We have about three other monuments, two or three others in the local area, including the Highlands Park, representing high schools, San Carlos High School, people that gave their all. In 1942 December, the military set up a dog training site at the site where we're talking about the park. It lasted till October 1944. Our city does not have a Veterans Memorial. We have some monuments, not a Veterans Memorial. Redwood City has a building. Very nice building, by the way. Belmont has an inscription at Twin Parks. We do not. What a wonderful opportunity. I mean, North Crestview Park? What about San Carlos Veterans Memorial or Veterans Memorial? It's anchored to the land. None of the other local cities have anything that says they did dogs or anybody. We're anchored to the land. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Morse, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Vesna Obrav... I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher this. Obravovic.
Hi there. Part of what's my little thing is what I call human nature. You all have probably been parents, or do you remember, like me? I've never been a parent yet, but I remember being a kid. So I see a park like Burton, Arguello, probably a few others or whatever you've probably seen, where the parent drives up, the car door opens up, the kid runs to the play structure. And I find it interesting in your little slide presentation, the first slide was a Vista Park, which would suit that little human nature just perfectly. And like Mr. Rack was asking about this feature and that feature kind of cramming in, I'd say all the features that are so-called activities should go into flat areas that you saw pictured in the picture, the first picture, into Vista Park. That would suit so-called human nature. The little, second little slide part about that, it's also fiscally more responsible because the parent could see, as soon as they get out of the car, that's where the kid's going to go to that structure, straight out to it. As opposed to up the hill, down a slope or whatever, it's more fiscal, and since it's already flat at Vista Park, it's going to cost less and also you're going to have to, you don't have to carve as much into the hillside. Vesna will verify, carving into the hillside costs money, no matter what you do with it. So we could save money or take the same money of carving into the hillside and put it into the flat areas of Vista Park. It seems more fiscally responsible. And like I say, it suits human nature. Opens the car door, there goes the kid right there. The parent can see it the whole time. So be a parent or be a kid like me.
Thank you, Tom. The good news is you'll get some help building trails in this park, so it won't all be on you.
Vesna, you're up next, and then you'll be followed by Marcy Lyzen.
Yes, my name is Vesna Obradovic, and I'm a structural engineer. This is a dream job for a structural engineer with all the retaining walls. Okay, dear council members, thank you for letting me speak. We're asking the council to think about the North Crestview and the Vista Park together as one park. They should be tied together conceptually. The topography of the Vista Park is such that it lends itself to an easy access parking, bringing utilities to it, monitoring the safety of the residents. Active park. This presents proposed plan, this presented proposed plan is not a common sense plan. Building a restroom on top of the hill, taking up all the utilities up the hill, building two-lane road with a roundabout with 10 parking spaces is overwhelming for this four-acre park. The project is too extensive and too expensive. To execute this plan, you will be destroying the hill as it, in its beauty. How is it that decision helping preserve the protect, or protect our park? It is not. Solution would be to use the lower pad at the Vista Park across the street to locate the restroom. This park is on the flat with a pad on the northeast side of the park that is even lower and closer to the street. It is away from any homes. It is already AD accessible. It is much easier and cheaper to bring the utilities to a restroom in that location to maintain it. At the North Crestview Park, make it a passive park. Provide a meandering walking path with a monument to the veterans, with observatory. This path could also be a running path with benches along the way. This is doable. Any civil engineer can map out an accessible path. It is less expensive and disruptive to the park than building a road. The parking can be provided on the street. We discussed this with the mayor in our meetings, at the library, he was open to it and actually liked the idea. The added slanted parking lots on the street and the crosswalk to the Vista Park would also narrow the Crestview in that reach and would serve as a calming measure to the speeding cars on the Crestview. It's a three-dimensional problem, guys. It's, and this, all you're seeing here is in two dimensions. If you saw this in three dimensions proposal and presentation, I think you would think differently.
Thank you.
Marcy, you're up next, and then you'll be followed by Tim Anderson.
Hi, thanks for having us here today. My name's Marcy Lyzen. I'm the president of the auxiliary at Post 585 American Legion, and we were asked here to discuss the Veterans Memorial. I read a lot about that dog training that was there. It was quite amazing. 4,500 dogs were trained there. There were only five training facilities in all of the United States. It's pretty amazing. So I think something up there, whether it's, we could name it, you know, Veteran Dog Memorial Park or something, I don't know, but it should be something veteran-ish. I do think that that area, it's beautiful with the view, and if you could set something up on top of that, besides just trails, everybody could, and I love the observation thing, I think would be amazing up there. I'm not sure about that Vista Park down below. That always seems to be its own park on its own. But anyhow, we do think that a Veterans Memorial would be wonderful in San Carlos. Belmont has a nice one at Twin Plains. And, and I think, we also don't have a community pool, but that doesn't look like it worked very well, so anyhow, thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Anderson, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Mary Farrell.
I'm Tim Anderson. Used to play for the 49ers, and now I'm with the American Legion. And I want to say this idea of putting the Veteran Dog Park up there is something that I think is, is very useful for this area and upgrades the community with value. We have looked at a lot of different things to, as a veteran, I'm a veteran myself, and this situation has come, had a real good time in, in, in our current state. And I think we need to just think about it more, and I applaud you, and we're all for the efforts of bringing this to fruition right here. So I want to say, in regards to the American Legion, we applaud you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Farrell. You're up next, and you'll be followed by Zara Anson.
Hi, I'm Mary Farrell. Thank you for letting me speak. This has to do with the park, and much of it has already been said, but I would like to remark on the designer about the wind problem. I live a half a mile down from, on Club Drive, from the park, and even then, the wind is so bad that you can't even go outside on your deck. Then you go down to the bottom of Club Drive, and from Crestview to Club Drive is one mile, and it's still so windy that you can't even go outside. The wind is really bad because it comes down to the canyon and it's all related to the fog up on Highway 35. So if you're talking about playgrounds and everything else, or kids, or even pickleball, which I love, it's not a practical place. It's just not. My last comment is, they celebrated Joni Mitchell very recently and all of her wonderful songs, and I hope you all remember what the song was. It was called "Pave Paradise, Put Up A Parking Lot." That's what you're trying to do.
Thank you.
Sarah Anson, and then Nadia Hack, you'll be up next.
So I've lived on Club Drive and in San Carlos my whole life, so I'm really close to North Crestview Park. And my friends and I are now in college, and we are really grateful that we lived in a neighborhood that is surrounded by nature and wildlife. And even when we bring friends to visit, they're just amazed that San Carlos, especially being in the Bay Area, is a place that does have nature, given that we're in such a tech-heavy area. And growing up, I've always felt like we have plenty of parks. We have Crestview, which seems to offer all the amenities that have been stated in this presentation. I mean, like you said about flying kites or seeing the views, people do that right across at Vista Park. We also have Burton Park, Highlands Park. So I just think it's really wrong to consider removing this park when there are so many options that achieve the same objectives. And it's so interesting that we keep using the word improved or undeveloped. Like, why do we have to consistently develop every single bit of land and turn it into a concrete jungle? At this point, why are we even talking about all these land acknowledgements when you're so quick to pave over it and deeming the trees not important, not as important as the parking spots? I've seen with a park, we are trying to target a younger generation and speaking to many of them and speaking on their behalf, I think creating this park would not be an improvement. It would be taking away a lot of our San Carlos charm. You have so many people that came out and urging you not to do this, and you're supposed to be for the people, so I also urge you not to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nadia Hack, you're up next, and then you'll be followed by David Krab.
Hi, thanks so much for the outreach process and all the town halls and on the design of North Crestview Park. The central theme, as was recognized by Verdi Design of all the community input from the surveys and things, was maintaining the nature and the wildlife that's there. However, none of the options that were actually offered to the community in the surveys, in the subsequent surveys honored that theme. Rather, the only options that were offered were focused on amenities such as fitness equipment, sports courts, and in fact, what the PRC, the design that the PRC is recommend, CC is recommending, is the option which involves the most concrete and disturbance to the hillside topography with multiple retaining walls, parking spots, and multi-use courts. I'd like the city council to stay true to the original theme regarding nature and wildlife and consider a design with less environmental impact to our land, trees, and wildlife. Many of us, as children, grew up playing in open fields and meadows. This would be one area of parkland that could remain unspoilt and provide something unique and differentiated for our children and grandchildren. The nature and open space in San Carlos sets us apart from other towns and is a key part of our desirability. I agree with some of the other speakers who have mentioned other things to prioritize, such as public safety. Seven and a half million dollars seems like a lot of money to spend on this when, you know, folks are worried about their safety and security. Thanks.
Thank you.
David Krab, and Andy Klein, you'll be following him.
Good evening, Mayor Dugan and city council members. Yeah, I want you to reject all three options that are in front of you right now, and then I'll put a caveat on that. I have no problem with having active recreation up in that exact location approximately, but there is a park right across the street, Vista Park, which is perfectly suited for the kind of activities that are being proposed for this park. And there are lots of reasons why that makes a lot more sense. The cost to develop Vista Park would be much lower than the cost to develop North Crestview because the site conditions are much less challenging. It's a basically level site. The park activities on the top of North Crestview would be less secure than activities at Vista Park because the top cannot be seen from Crestview Drive. People are more likely to visit activity areas in Vista Park because they'd be more visible and more enticing as people drove by. Otherwise, you got to put a big sign up there and say, "Go up the hill to the top of the hill, and there are great things up here." Vista Park is currently, Vista Park is currently configured as an underused asset that could be greatly improved from both a maintenance and an activity point of view. North Crestview would require lots of grading retaining walls, large amount of paved driveway, new uphill water supply and waste lines for the toilets, security lighting and police patrols to maintain security, continuous maintenance, especially for the toilets and other items, and it's also a very windy area. Vista Park would require minimal grading, would require no auto parking, already has water on-site for the existing sprinkler system and could easily add water to the toilets for an additional sprinklers if needed, is visibly open if passes by, so would not need additional security cameras or on-site police patrol visits, is already on the city's maintenance schedule, and if developed in lieu of North Crestview Park, would allow North Crestview to remain a dedicated open space, which most of the neighbors prefer. We've had these community outreach surveys, and every survey went out with no suggestion that there's a Vista Park across the street from this. So all the people that responded to this who don't know North Crestview Park, they had all these ideas and so on, they had no idea that there was an option. And it was never, ever presented to the community that there was an option to do Vista Park. And Vista Park makes so much more sense economically and visually and safety-wise and all sorts of other reasons. I don't understand why you're locked into this North Crestview development. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Andy Klein, former mayor and council member Andy Klein, and then you'll be followed by Andrew Taylor.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to thank the Parks and Rec staff for a very great open process that brought us to very great options for this park. My family is in favor of the option with the sport court. We think it offers the most flexibility. Our home directly abuts the park, and we think it'll be a great addition to the neighborhood. I was going to talk a little bit about the Veterans Memorial and the importance behind that, but I can't say it better than our vets did, so I'll skip that part. And, but finally, I wanted to bring up a little history question. For those of you who are newer to the area, you might not know the development history in San Carlos. The last park we built of any true size to incorporate a field or a meadow or anything like that, that didn't require us to close a school to do it, was Crestview Park. And that was built in 1982, which is 42 years ago, exact year I was born. We haven't built a park since. We've added a lot of people. Most of the homes on the hill did not exist back then. They've all kind of sprouted up. We have not added more parkland. This community needs more parkland. It's one of the top things that we do need. As we add more people, we should add more parks. I want to thank you for your time. Thank you for prioritizing this agenda item, and thank you to staff for doing a great process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Taylor, you'll be followed by Matt Hassel, and that would be our last speaker slip for in-person. So if you are in-person and you'd like to speak on this, now would be the time to submit a card. a card.
Evening, council. Thank you for letting me speak. Hearing some of the early comments about the financing of this, so I'm going to put my public finance hat back on. It's kind of a scary thought that we had when we went through this seven or eight years ago, and I think it was $700,000, $800,000 for a passive use. And that got kicked out. And I had several exchanges with a couple council members and state administration, and they said the same thing that was said tonight. It's unfunded. We don't have the money for it. And now we're talking about $7.5 million. So I got to ask you, where is that? Are you guys all going to commit to spending $7.5 million tonight and definitively fund that? Or are we just going to kick the can down the road and waste another, I don't know how much we spent on planning? Because this is sounding exactly like where we were seven or eight years ago. And have any of you actually, I mean, it also seems like it's a build it and they will come approach. I mean, have any of you been up there at 4:00 in the afternoon, walked the site? Have you? It's windy. People will come up once, and they'll never take their kids up there again because they freeze to death. And then lastly, my concern, I think the idea that other people have articulated about looking at Vista and Crestview together is a sound approach, both financially. I know, Mayor, you expressed your concern about the road going up through the middle and the cost and the grading. But the public safety part, I think I articulated as well, has got to be integrated into this because right now, today, we have a sheriff's department that does nothing on Crestview. This morning, I picked up condoms, fast food. It's the same thing every morning, a group of us, five or six of us, we walk our dogs, we go out for our morning walks, and there's just junk up there, and the police never do anything, and they're fully aware of it. And I'm tired of talking myself blue in the face with the sheriff's department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Hassel. And while Matt's coming up, I'll go ahead and note that we do have one hand on Zoom. So now would be the time, if you're on Zoom, to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Once we start public comment in Zoom, we will cap it. Only the hands that are up.
Take the Zoom first?
No.
All right. Well, my colleagues from the American Legion have said kind of everything that I would have brought up. I'm the commander of the Sons of the American Legion, so I am not a vet, but I was raised by vets. And I really appreciate what some of these other people have brought up. Like, so maybe not too much pavement or concrete is a good idea. But I think that the idea that we would set ourselves up to respect what the veterans have done, what happened here with the dog training, as Mr. Earhart brought up, I think that's an important thing that we should do. So I think there may be a balance to be struck. And like I said, I can't really bring up more than my colleagues, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sounds like we'll turn to Zoom comments now, so if you're at home, now's the time to raise your hand, and we have at least one.
Yes, and we still have the one. Do you want to, are you comfortable capping?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So Aaron M., you should be able to unmute.
Hi, thank you. We recently moved across the street from this park, from Menlo Park, where we were right near Neyland Park. And there was a big kerfuffle about the safety between parking and bikers and pedestrians. And as it's been noted, there's not much parking in any of these plans. And so I would just urge, as we go into the next phases on this, to consider safety. There's bikers who currently have a nice, big area to bike safely. If there is cars parking on the street, that might impede their safety. It's very difficult for us to pull out of our driveways across the street if there's cars parked by the roads, particularly Marigold and Iris, if there's cars parked there, and then across on the other side as well. So if there could be some red zones where we could pull out safely without hitting bikers or pedestrians, those would all be great improvements to think about. So just appreciate that as you guys move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And does that complete our online comments?
Yes.
Okay. So that wraps up public comment on this item. Appreciate everyone's input. I know a lot of thought has gone into this by everyone in the community. And I know that gave me a list of further questions that I would like to have answered. Do we need to formally close our public comment? Okay.
No, this is not hearing.
The next one's the public hearing. Got it. Okay, very good. And so I will open it back to my colleagues if they have follow-up questions. I know I have a couple. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Amy, you and I talked a few days ago, and we talked about that plan from 2017. Not that I'm advocating for that, but are you able to put up that particular slide? Because that's what we originally approved, but that was a different council, and this council has wanted to consider something different. And I thought we should just have that sort of as a frame of reference.
My apologies. I don't have it right now. Possibly, if you give me a few minutes, we could pull it up.
Okay, that would be fine. And I just had a few questions about that and some cost issues and that sort of thing. So, you know, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to defer my time to allow them to bring that up.
Sure, we will get back to you then. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Amy, there's been several comments tonight about looking at North Crestview along with Vista Park and kind of taking, I feel like there has been some talk in the community about taking a more comprehensive approach. And I know that our Parks Master Plan process is going to look at our parks holistically. I'm wondering if you could just talk to us in the community about how that master plan process will work for all of our parks and kind of the timeline for that, how long that will take.
Sure. So first, some history on North Crest, I'm sorry, on Vista Park. Vista Park was our first native park where we abandoned the use of all herbicides and pesticides. And we've taken on that approach in all of our parks, but that's been going on for years at Vista Park. It's kind of why you see it more natural state, and there's definitely more waiting to be done at that park. For the Parks Master Plan, we actually have our site kickoff tour this Friday, and we will be going through a very thorough and in-depth community process. The first step is to assess all of our parks and facilities and determine what we have and the status of all of them, and then engage with the community on what are some, again, recreation amenities or park planning that you want to see in the community, and then see where they fit at each park site. We also will be subsequently doing a community center assessment to determine, should we build a community center in town? What does that look like? Where does it go? Does it include a pool facility? And look at financing that separately and looking at operational costs. So definitely a very thorough assessment of all of our parks and then identifying where these improvements need to be made and where new recreational opportunities should be provided.
And the timeline for getting that master planning process done?
We're looking at a timeline of about 14 to 16 months, so that should wrap up by the end of 2025.
Okay. And just one follow-up question to that. Was it ever considered to, you know, do this planning process of North Crestview after that master planning process? How did we prioritize this master plan over the holistic one?
In the council strategic planning treaty, council directed staff to start the North Crestview plan first and then do the whole Parks Master Plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Mr. Mayor, can we just talk about the timeline of if this gets approved tonight? What the steps are after that?
Sure. So tonight, it would not be an approval, but it would be a selection of a concept for our consultants to then narrow down if there's any changes or modifications that council wants to provide tonight. And then we will complete the SEQA process, and that will take us to late fall. And so just timing on council meeting schedule, it possibly would come to council for final adoption of the master plan by the end of the year or the very first part of 2025. And then, as mentioned before, there is no funding in our upcoming budget, it's like, July 1st, for design, but then in the following fiscal year. So it wouldn't be until summer of 2025 where we would start any initiation of design.
Thank you, Pranita. Councilmember Collins, did you have your question with the?
I do, thank you. And thanks, Amy and Tyler.
Tyler.
And Crystal for finding that. When we approved this back in 2017, it was my understanding that this was going to be on the master plan, and within a few years, it was going to be constructed. My memory of it, and I may be wrong, but my memory of it, it was that the cost of this was somewhere around $400,000 to $500,000. Is that a?
Correct.
Is that a correct?
Yep. Back in 2017.
$2017, correct. So whatever it is today, we'd apply inflationary factor. Okay. The reason I wanted to bring this up is to show that this was the sort of the minimalist approach that a lot of people liked at that time. I'm not suggesting that we approve it tonight. I'm not really sure what I'm in favor of, but I think it's important to see what the starting point was, that there was a concept for, you know, a walking area and benches and a war dog memorial and, you know, areas for people to gather and that sort of thing. So this is the design that I think this council was not really enamored with. And plus, this project had just been, you know, because of other budget priorities, it just needed to be shelved, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. All right. So that was all I just wanted to, I wanted to bring that up and make sure that people were aware of what our starting point was. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate that. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan. I'm going to try to, if I can phrase this, not get this straight. So I think some of the comments came up about, you know, we've had a couple different thoughts we've had, sort of three different options that have kind of come up from people. Some is just, let's do, back to maybe even four options, go to the 2017 plan, keep it passive. Someone said to a couple people, I mean, I've gotten some letters too, saying, okay, let's develop it in A or B and have a more active park. And then we talked about Vista Park as an option as well. And then I guess I would want to understand, we also heard from some of the speakers about Wildlife Quarter. So if we were to say, okay, let's scrap this and go to Vista, I'm assuming that disrupts the Wildlife Quarter there, and so it would be better to do nothing than to develop any of these things. Was that, I'm not an expert on Wildlife Quarters, but my guess is they would go, anyone would come from the PUC property through North Crestview, through Vista.
I think that's a fair comment. Yeah, I would agree with you.
So there's sort of this view of do nothing is sort of a group. And so you sort of have some conflict with Vista as an option because it now might conflict with people who would prefer the Wildlife Quarter. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I would agree with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. And yeah, I had the same questions about Vista Park and understand that that's intended to be a natural park, and a lot of planning and thought was put into that. As far as the animal pass-through, you know, this is a concept level. I know we don't go into detail, but will there be a SEQA process? Is that part of a SEQA process? Will we have a better understanding of migration, et cetera, as we further design this?
Yes. So again, tonight, it would be, should council select one of the plans to move forward with, we then finalize that SEQA process with our consultants that we have for environmental. And so then that, in the end of the year, we bring the final plan back for council for adoption, and it includes the SEQA findings.
Got it. And I'm actually pretty familiar with this park. I've walked it many times at different hours of the day. I too live in the hills and experienced the wind, which, you know, we have great days, and we have some windy days. But, you know, there's a fence along the whole back of this. So there's no, I mean, they're like the CPUC lands, there's never like any thought for migration of animals. There's never openings in those fences, are there? I mean, I'm just curious.
So separating the North Crestview Site property from the SFPUC property, there is a chain link fence. And there is a way that the animals are getting either through or over the fence at this time.
So they're jumping over the fence. So, okay. Yeah, I didn't know they could jump an eight-foot fence. And then I heard some other questions that were good. So survey would be part of this. Our next step, the design step, would involve a survey, I'm assuming. We would know our boundary lands up there, is that right?
Correct. Survey has been a part of this process, and Todd can.
That's what I was going to highlight. A survey was done, boundaries were established, and all of the proposals that we have are using those survey information.
Okay. Thank you. And public safety, we obviously take public safety very seriously as a city and as a council. We always have, has, I know this is the conceptual level, but has this been run through our sheriff's department and our fire department for fire safety issues?
Yes. So early on, we had a conversation with our chief of police, looking at potentially developing this park site. The sheriff's office, their experience is that a developed park that is utilized for specific purposes actually decreases any crimes that do occur. And they do compare it similarly to Crestview Park, where you can't see Crestview Park from Crestview Drive. They do have to drive into that driveway or entrance and circle through and go into that park. So it is, would be similar to that as well. And then in terms of fire, we did reach out to fire about emergency access, and that is why you see the road, driveway entrance. And it has been designed to meet certain grade requirements for emergency vehicles and access, and then the turnaround.
Thank you. And the whole idea of having to drive in periodically, that wasn't a particular concern because they do it at Crestview now, and they would just do a similar type.
Correct. It was not a concern of the sheriff's office.
Okay. Thank you. And then also appreciated the comment that, you know, what is the, if we're designing this, thinking young people might use it, what do young people think about this? And I know our Park and Rec Culture Commission made a full cycle. Did we run this past our youth advisory committee? Have we discussed this with them at all?
It was not brought to a youth advisory council meeting. We did have youth participants in both of the outreach. I'm not sure about survey responders, but I know that they did come in person to two of those outreach meetings.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Rack, do you have further questions?
I did. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I had one kind of follow-up, just sort of was raised when you mentioned some of the public safety aspects. Amy, do we, I know we put sort of, we put automatic AEDs in some of the parks. And so is that something we could eventually think about for this park? And do we have, and I don't think we have these in any of the parks, sort of if you're on a, sometimes what campus is, you have like sort of the ability to hit an alarm, like the blue light thing if something is going on, if we, you know. And I think like the AEDs, it takes a picture of you. So there's some, you can't just, it's more difficult to do pranks and do that kind of stuff from that. And is that something that we've thought about for any of the parks, or do we have in any of the parks?
Sure. In terms of the AEDs, we did just look at parks with our athletic fields to install them at those sites. But that's something if council wants to look at expanding that program further, those should be installed like late summer. And we can look to see how they're going, and if we want to expand that program, if council wants to set that as a priority, we can definitely do that and look at that. In talking with sheriff's office, looking at those, kind of you think of them, as you mentioned, college campus, like alert or alarms, towers, those were more, they had more, I mean, I don't want to say concerns, but definitely a process that would have to be vetted because that does then tie into county dispatch. And we wouldn't want to create an unnecessary problem with county dispatch if that would block up any of their lines or, so that would definitely be the sheriff's office to chime in a lot on that.
Okay. That's helpful. That's helpful. No, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Adam. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a follow-up question to one of your answers, Amy, about the timeline for this. I just wanted to make sure I understood. So we go through the SEQA process, final adoption is late this year or early next year. And then you said we would initiate the design phase or is that, and then the design phase takes another six months or how?
Sure. So again, it just meets that, that council schedule. We either hit the last November meeting or we would do it in early January. And then funding for design doesn't start until July 1st, 2025. So we wouldn't initiate anything before then. Once we hire a consultant and start the process, I would assume it takes roughly a year. Yeah. It would be about a year for the design.
For the design phase. And then we fund it if, if we have money and then.
So looking at fiscal year '26, '27 for initial construction funding and construction most likely would be more than a year, if not two.
A year?
Less than two. We'll say 18 months, rough estimates.
So we're looking a few years out.
Correct.
If, if funding comes through.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. That was an exhaustive list of questions. I appreciate staff and all the good information. So yeah, I think we can now move to consider the item and if anyone has thoughts they'd like to share now, this would be a good time. Councilmember Rack.
All right. I'll go first. First of all, I appreciate all the public comments and the input that we receive both here in person. It was nice to have people in person. We often have with Zoom comments, empty rooms. So I appreciate people coming in for that and also all the individuals who wrote in as well and for the whole public process. It was really, I feel like a pretty thorough process. In terms of just general comments, I mean, I just, I'll just tackle the pool question. Well, I'm certainly in favor of looking at a pool in a community center. I don't think this is the right location for that. I think somewhere down in this area is, or somewhere in the flats is a much better location for that. I understand there's a lot of public interest in that and certainly look forward to the master plan and being able to see if something like that could happen. I'm certainly in favor of the War Memorial and the War Dog Memorial. I think just on the, so I'm certainly in favor of the memorial itself. I think in terms of the, I'll just, I know there was some discussion about sort of the park naming. I would prefer that we go that through a process through the public versus just sort of deciding here on that because there may be other views, other opinions, other ideas. They may have some good creative names that may include a veteran's name in it, but would want to go through a longer process on that. I think, you know, what was interesting to me, I, I was trying to decide between sort of what A and B, what seemed better to me because I do feel like we need a more active park in San Carlos, not just for the individuals living up in North Crestview, but throughout the city. We're impacted and I know when I had kids, we enjoyed going to all the, I have kids when they were little kids, going to all the various parks around town and exploring them and having new things and different things at each of the parks. So I do think, you know, as was pointed out, we haven't developed a new sort of active park in decades. So I do support doing something at North Crestview. I was, you know, a little concerned about which play area was going to be better and what was going to work. It sounds like it's not impactful. So I would say, I mean, I want to hear more from my colleagues, but I'm sort of leaning towards B, which was what the Park and Rec Commission mentioned, but I certainly could be swayed for, for A on that as well, which would have a little less concrete in there, in the park. And I did just want to follow up on the, the mayor's comment about the land acknowledgement. I am certainly supportive of a land acknowledgement. I think it's a good thing to do. I think I am with the mayor that it's something we should think about where the best location is in the city. This may be the best spot, but I could see Arguelo or other places. So I think as part of the master plan, I think that'd be something to do and to reach out to Native Americans in the area to, to get a sense from them what, where, where they may come down on it. Those are my initial thoughts.
Thank you, Adam. I appreciate that. Who would like to go next? Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start by also thanking the members of the public who came tonight and also who wrote emails. We received a lot of emails over the weekend. I guess in general, I think it's really important for us to set expectations. And I think, you know, proposing the pool was with the best of intentions to really respond to what staff heard through the surveys. I worry that we've kind of set people up for disappointment though by doing that because we didn't present that with the cost, you know, that it would be so much more. And I also, you know, looking forward, I think it's really important to manage expectations about the timing of this project because it looks like we're approving a plan tonight and it can get built in the next, you know, six months. And we have a lot of really big projects that our council is focused on, the downtown being one of those that's going to require a lot of money. So I guess my, my first kind of comment is to, I don't know, I would like to hear what my colleagues think about finishing our Parks Master Plan process because we've just heard so much tonight about thinking about, about North Crestview along with Vista Park. You know, I always, as my colleagues know, I like to take the holistic approach and then kind of dive into the details and I'm kind of on the fence about how to move forward with this project. I also think that if we had done the master plan for our parks, we could have kind of eased the disappointment about the pool because we could have said, well, we've actually identified another site where we could, you know, build a pool. One of the things that we heard in so many emails over the weekend is that people not only want a pool, but they also want a kids' area. Amy, you mentioned this a little bit, a toddler area, an indoor and outdoor space. They want parking. They want a place for swim meets, a picnic site, a gymnasium. So people are looking for something much bigger than I think a six lane lap pool. And that's something that we've discussed as a council at strategic planning and that's why we've incorporated looking into a recreation center with potential aquatics. So, and then of course that brings with it a whole nother price tag. And I think it's important to be transparent with the community that San Bruno is spending $60 million on their recreation and aquatic center and South San Francisco is spending $49 million on their aquatic center. They're incredibly expensive and we will have to think very creatively about, as a community, of how, you know, we want to fund that because that's a lot more than our city budget can accommodate. I also think that there's a question of equity because if we're talking about a pool that, as our city manager spoke about earlier, that, you know, are tweens and, you know, kids who are out walking around can access, building a pool at the very top of a very steep hill where parents are going to have to drive and have a car, maybe, you know, we talk a lot about equity in this community and maybe that's not the most equitable place to put a pool for access. It is a lovely site. I have spent time walking around and, you know, I, I do like the concept of a park for all ages. So I, you know, if we move forward with choosing a plan tonight, I would probably choose B because you not only have the toddler playground, but you have a sport court for your teens to use. You have a walking path, which is so popular with our seniors. The meadow can be used for a variety of uses. I really like the Veterans Memorial and I really appreciate our veterans who have shown up tonight and all of their acquaintances and the War Dog. I think acknowledging our, that history is really important. And yeah, I think that's, that's about it. Curious what my colleagues think. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate that. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be short, but we just wanted to thank the public and all the comments we received on email. There were a lot of them and a lot of passion around the subject. So thank you. I'm going to support the War Memorial or another naming of the park, acknowledge the land and also renaming the park. And I'm going to just agree that option B gives us the most options, but I would like to see a star, you know, something like you could do, like telescopes or something.
All right. Thank you, Pranita. Councilmember Rack, I'm sorry, Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, thank you to all that came out tonight. I've just got some bullet points that I want to touch on. I would also like to lend my support to the Veterans and War Dog Memorial. I think whatever we do, that ought to be there. I also think we ought to figure out a way to honor our native ancestors' contribution to the area and the fact that they were here first. And just as, you know, there was questions, have we been to that park? I grew up here, so I was in that park all the time. I lived down the hill from it. I was there at eight o'clock in the morning, noon. My mother didn't like it when I was up there at seven o'clock at night, but you know, in those days, you came home when it was dark. So, so I know all about the park. I know when it was ruins from a country club. It was actually a lot of fun to play up there. Again, I never told my mother about that. We've talked about Vista Park and the, the fact that, you know, we were, this council asked to study North Crestview Park, not Vista Park. But as the vice mayor said, she would like to see a more holistic look at the Parks Master Plan. I do agree with that because we should be looking at all of our parks and what we ought to do with them and what the priorities are. With respect to public safety, it got me to thinking, you know, there was a crime that was solved recently with the use of, I guess they call them flock cameras now, but then when I looked it up, they're basically the ALPRs that we approved, what, nine years ago? And my question to the chief would be, are there any in that area? I know they're kind of secretive as to where they go, but if they're not there and, and if we're going to develop the park, maybe we ought to put up more. I have a feeling, and I, I can't prove this, but I have a feeling that developed areas with a lot more people active in them tend to be safer and tend to discourage crime activity. I would like to hear from the chief on that. With respect to who came and who didn't, I really expected more people tonight from the community that wants a more active park. And there are, I think there is a great part of the community that wants that. And part of me thinks a lot of them are home taking care of their kids and that's why they're not here today. They may be watching online. So, but I also respect the voices of the people that came and wanted to be heard and, you know, made the visit, didn't, didn't watch it on TV or Zoom or whatever. I think that that, that deserves to be acknowledged. Finally, with respect to funding, yeah, this is an expensive project. When, when if it's all done, there will be someone else sitting in my seat and they will be listening to all the same arguments. But I know that from working with this council for as long as I did, is that we really don't do anything in this town unless we have the money to do it. So if, whatever concept is approved, it may take a few years, but once, once the, once the project is given the go-ahead, that'll be because the funds have been earmarked and not at the expense of other things. Like Sarah said, we're going to need to prioritize where we want to spend our money. And I think we will. This council's been very responsible about doing that and I think that's, that's really a good thing. I mean, one of the reasons that we are in as good financial position as we are as a city today is because not only the other four individuals sitting here, but the other council members I've served with over the last 10 or 12 years. So it's, it's been, it's been a long road since the times where we weren't funded for a lot of programs, but things have improved immeasurably. So last comment about a pool, I don't think there's anyone in this town who, who wants a pool more than I do. I've been, I was on the pool committee 25 years ago. It hasn't happened. I want to thank the 15 people that sent me emails begging us to put in a pool. I would love to have a pool. Everybody knows that, but that's not the right place for it. I have other places for it. I have, there is flat land that we own that has better weather, that we can put a pool in. Amy knows where I want it. Whether or not it gets built there is something else. One thing that was missed in all the discussion about what pools cost is the revenue side of it. If, if pools were not a viable, they weren't a fiscal viability for cities, no one would have them. But pools bring in a tremendous amount, particularly good pools, bring in a tremendous amount of revenue every year. And they don't maybe offset 100% of the costs of a city, but as the city manager once told me, there is no recreational facility where you can charge enough fees to offset all the costs that, that the city incurs because that's what we do as a city, is we provide services, we provide benefits and we, we provide opportunities for people. So given that, that perspective, I'm still inclined generally to support this concept B. It has a lot of things in it. I do realize it'll take a long time. I have heard the comments about wildlife and nature and that sort of thing. I'm comforted by the fact that there is, there, a SEQA analysis will take into that, add into consideration and we'll see how that process works. So sorry to be so long-winded, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you, Ron. I appreciate that and I appreciate your many decades of experience with our parks and with thinking about where pools should go. And if Ron Collins doesn't think that's the right spot for the pool, then by God, that's not the right spot for the pool. So, and, and I am happy we are going to go through a process. We already have budget this year to study a recreation center. That'll obviously be part of the Park and Rec Master Plan process. I know aquatics will certainly be discussed as all a part of that. I know Redwood City is joining their Y with their Veterans Memorial Senior Center in their brand new building over there. So a great honoring of veterans by Redwood City and, and also, you know, I think something like that would be great with the pool and, and there's a lot of opportunity there as we explore that. So why are we doing anything at North Crestview Park? I hear that from the community. I appreciate, you know, your consistent question, asking that. You know, we, we had a conversation about that at I think both of the big community meetings and I will say the same thing. I think it's worth everyone understanding that we are growing as a community and whether we wanted that or not as a community, it was mandated to us. We just worked through a very lengthy, a very challenging housing element update and all the communities of the Bay Area have done this, all in California have done this. And it was quite simply a state mandate. We have to provide more housing and we got our allocation and we did what was legally required of us and we did upzone multifamily unit aspects of our community, mostly on El Camino and in our downtown core, but to provide for 3,200 new units of housing in San Carlos. We're a community of just over 10,000 households. So that is a lot of growth and that is what we're trying to get in front of as a community. And I just think, I definitely understand the neighbors' concerns. I understand the process we did in 2017. I don't think that's an option for us anymore. Our parks are impacted. We know that. We're going to go through a more formal process to understand that even deeper. I in fact asked that question a couple of times very early in this. Boy, don't we want to do that master plan before we do this? And we did. We decided as, as a council, after some pretty solid discussion that no, we're feeling enough pressure. Recreational access was a fresh goal of ours as a community. And so we did choose to, to, to do, run this process ahead of the master plan process. So I, I support us following through with that idea because anything else, you know, would understandably be frustrating for folks that have invested in this process so far and for our own staff who, you know, were simply following our instructions to move forward with this. So I do support moving forward with it and I appreciate all the time and effort our Park and Rec and Culture Commission put into thinking about this. And they voted for option two or option B with close vote. You don't see too many splits out of a Park and Rec Commission, so we. You don't see too many splits out of a Park and Rec Commission, so we take note when we see that. But it was, it was pretty easy to see why they split. Option A and Option B are both pretty darn good options, so, you know, which one's better? They did vote for B. What I heard this evening was that B has everything A has plus a, the multi-use court, which is one of our impacted needs. We do know that. Slightly smaller play area, but still perfectly useful in size, and that seems like a decent layout to me. So I, I support Option B. I think, I heard at least two of my colleagues in support of Option B, so we're making some progress this evening. What else? I do thank my colleagues. I think I heard universal support for Veterans Memorial and recognition of the War Dog history up there. I also thank the veterans in the room and those otherwise affiliated with our legion. Appreciate your service, and I think that should be recognized. Our neighboring communities all have pretty substantial Veterans Memorials, and I look forward to the day when, when we have a really good, solid place where we can have ceremonies and really recognize the contributions of our veterans in our community. So thank you for that. And following on to that, I just, given the history up there, I would ask if we would be willing to name it San Carlos Veterans Memorial Park this evening. I heard Councilmember Rack about running a further process. I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I just think the, the history we have up there, the, the strong consensus for a memorial, and just the sense of place that, that might add to this park, all very worthwhile. It, it makes sense to me anyways. And the, I definitely would like to see the observation deck put back into this plan if we can move things around a bit. I think that's very much worthwhile. They, that community already makes that use of that park. That's obviously a STEM activity. I've actually seen, like, I don't know, 15, 20 people at some of those events, and they hold them pretty regularly. So I really do want to support that, and this is the perfect park for that. And I think I heard one other person mention that, so I hope we have some consensus on, on the observation deck. And I would just reiterate that if, you know, this is a lot of stuff there, maybe we could consider just more of a process on where is the right place to recognize the land heritage that, that we've inherited from the Aloneye Tribe. You know, our Guello Park, actually, we have Native American burials in that park, and it's, we also have other natural parks much closer to the land that we did inherit from them. That seems to me, uninformed by what the tribes might think, that seems to me perhaps more appropriate, but I don't know. If this feels appropriate as we go through a further process, I'm certainly open to having it here, and I would like to see such a thing in San Carlos. So yeah, those are my thoughts. Councilmember Collins, you had something further?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say I would also support naming it Veterans Memorial Park as well. I think that's a great idea. My dad was a veteran, my uncle was a veteran, and I only escaped military duty due to a high draft number, so I have a great deal of respect for our veterans.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment on, on that aspect of the discussion. I think it's, I don't think it was, we have agendized that particular question tonight, but it certainly would be appropriate to discuss that as part of the master plan or bring it forward as a separate item.
Okay.
So, let me just clarify. I mean, you can choose within the scope of the master plan to call it, to give it that name, but there would actually require the council to take some other actions that aren't agendized tonight to formally change it in all our land use documents and everywhere to make it the true, the name.
Got it. I appreciate that. Well, I appreciate what I hear now is a consensus on an intent like that, and I also really do respect Adam's thought that we should run a, a process around this and make sure we all agree with that as a community. So I think that's, that's a nice place to land this, so thank you. So are there anything else we need to make sure we have consensus on? Did I hear three nods on the observation deck?
I'm happy to add my name to that if it wasn't there.
Okay, very good. And is there, I think there's two folks that would like the Aloneye land use acknowledgement brought to a bit broader of a process before it necessarily lands here. Is there another thought on that?
Could we study that as part of the master plan process of where, yes? Yeah, Amy says yes. Maybe that would be an appropriate place.
Absolutely. And, and it should be part of that process, absolutely. So, very good. So I think that is solid consensus. We're ready to take a motion then. What I heard was Option B with the definite on the Veterans Memorial and the naming and the Aloneye to be further considered under the master planning process.
I'm happy to make that motion. I move to adopt Resolution 2024-85, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving master plan Concept B for North Crestview Park, including the Veterans Memorial and an overlook option.
Observation.
Observation platform. And I think that's it in the actual ordinance, right?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor McDowell? Yes. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Benkettash?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Andy Arduigan?
Yes. So thank you, everyone, for that. We are going to move forward as a city with, with Option B. Thank you. Let's take a nine-minute break and reconvene at 9:45. Thank you. We're in recess. All right, thank you again, everyone. We will come back to order and move forward with our meeting. And next up, thank you, everyone who is still with us. Item 10, a public hearing considering three actions to enable the annexation of 244 Club Drive into the city of San Carlos. We're, we're always open to growing as a city, so tell us how we can do it, please.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor. Hello, councilmembers. My name is Ralph Robinson. I'm a consultant senior planner with the city, and I'll be presenting the item before you this evening at 244 Club Drive. So the request is to enable the pre-zoning and annexation of the property at 244 Club Drive. In order to facilitate this, there are three requests for you to consider this evening. The first would be a resolution to approve a general plan map amendment. The second, introducing ordinance to adopt the zoning district boundary map amendment. And the last would be a resolution to authorize a property tax exchange between the county and the city to enable that annexation. Now, the site is a developed parcel. It has an existing single-family home on it. It's currently located in unincorporated San Mateo County, but as you can see from the map here, it is bounded on the left and right by San Carlos parcels. It's currently zoned RS3, and it abuts on the front city-maintained Club Drive. The property is also within the San Carlos sphere of influence. So, in September of 2023, the applicant completed their application and submitted their fees for the pre-zoning annexation. It's a process that began as early as 2019, in fact, so a bit of time to get to that point. Following that application, of course, we completed the staff review and eventually got this to an April 1st, 2024, planning a transportation commission, where the PTC adopted resolutions recommending that you approve the general plan map amendment and the zoning district boundary map amendment. Now, those two items were before you this evening, as well as a resolution to authorize the property tax exchange. Just a quick note, the negotiation of that property tax exchange does not take place until after the PTC hearing, so that is reason for the steps here. If those three items are approved this evening, ultimately, we'll move If those three items are approved this evening, ultimately, we'll move forward with approval by LAFCO. So the first item, the general plan map amendment, of course, that must be consistent with the applicable general plan policies. The most important of those is that connection to the city sewer, as well as facilitation of other city services at this site, is feasible. Now, PoliWorks has reviewed the application, and given the existing sewer on Club Drive, it's found to be very feasible to make that connection. The applicant will be responsible for all costs associated with that. It's also required within the general plan that the property be pre-zoned, single-family, low-density, which is the current use on the site. In addition, environmental and fiscal analyses are required by the general plan. The environmental review of this found the project to be categorically exempt under CEQA. The grounds for that are included in the meeting materials. Additionally, a fiscal impact analysis was completed, which found the impact on the city to be roughly neutral. Now, the second item, the zoning district boundary map amendment, also requires that consistency with the general plan. In addition, also requires consistency with Title 18, related to promoting growth in an orderly manner. Now, the site is immediately adjacent to the city, so we're simply extending the city by one developed parcel. And thirdly, that is consistent with the goal to achieve balance of land uses and increase the inventory of land within a given zoning district. The project effectively increases the stock of single-family parcels by one. Okay, in addition, Chapter 1838 of the zoning code includes additional pre-zoning annexation criteria. I've briefly summarized those here, so to avoid being too redundant, again, required consistency with the general plan, as we've overviewed. Also required is the property be contiguous to the city boundary and within the established sphere of influence. Again, it's been evaluated that street sewer and drainage connections are feasible, as well as the provision of other public services. The environmental and fiscal impact analyses have been completed, and the site meets the requirements for developed lots within Chapter 1838, those principally being that the parcel cannot be further subdivided. Okay, and then the third item for you this evening would be the authorization of the property tax exchange. Staff has worked with the county assessor, as well as LAFCO and the other county staff, and we find that meets the standards and kind of the precedent for other tax-sharing agreements between the city and the county, which we reviewed with other previous annexations. City will receive some incremental annual revenue, and the overall impact, again, is going to be roughly neutral on the general fund. Were the site ever be sold, there would be a modest increase in those revenues. Staff completed the required public notice with the mailing on June 14th, as well as publishing in the newspaper. We did not receive any public comment following the city council notice. One comment was received prior to the planning and transportation commission meeting. This was from an adjacent neighbor with a concern about the location of a detached garage with an encroachment of about five inches over the property line. Given that this annexation is not going to include any physical changes to the site other than those required for the sewer connection, we've essentially left that to the property owners for them to resolve between themselves. And I will quickly add, we did get a comment from the property owner themselves, who's also the applicant. They were not able to be here this evening due to a kind of sudden family obligation that came up, but they did just want to, again, note that they've been in this process since 2019, and just thank you for your help with facilitating this process along. Okay, so to recap, the result of the planning and transportation commission of April 1st was to recommend adoption of both the general plan map amendment and the zoning district boundary map amendment. And thirdly, staff is recommending the city council approval of the resolution to authorize the property tax exchange. So of course, I'm available for questions, and thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Ralph. Appreciate the very thorough report and all the work that went into this, so thank you for that. And do any of my colleagues have questions on this item? I just have one. Will this count as a new housing unit under our housing element allocation?
Unfortunately, no, because the arena count is based on building permits, evidently. But I will add, were they ever to add, say, an ADU on the site, that would count towards the city arena.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just note, even if this is revenue neutral, we are on the right side of history as this might change owners some decade and, you know, on into the future, so I'm always supportive of San Carlos growing, even if it's rather incremental. So I support this. Is there any other questions or comments on this one? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, second. Well, do we have public comment on this?
I do not have any slips for in person, and there are no hands raised on Zoom.
We will pause for 15 seconds. If you're logged into Zoom, now is the time to raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion and a second. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan.
Yes, public comment is closed. Unless there's further questions or comment, I would entertain a motion to approve the item.
I can do it. I move to adopt resolution 2024-86. A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos adopting a general plan map amendment to the land use designation of single-family, low-density, 3D US acre for the property located 244 Club Drive, APN 049050070. A second?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan.
Yes, very good. This item's approved and...
Sorry.
Oh, okay.
Pranita, would you like help? I can read the next one if you want a break. I move to introduce ordinance number...
1618.
1618, an ordinance of the city of San Carlos adopting a zoning district boundary map amendment to allow pre-zoning of the property to RS3, single-family, low-density for the property located at 244 Club Drive, APN 049050070.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan.
Yes. There's a third item.
I move to adopt resolution 2024-87. A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos making a determination of property tax exchange pursuant to provisions of Chapter 282, Section 59, Part .05, implementation of Article 13A of the California Constitution commencing with Section 95, Division 1 of the Revenue and Tax Code for the property located at 244 Club Drive, APN 049-050-070.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan.
Yes, now all three items are approved, and I would like to warmly welcome the Farmsworth family to San Carlos. So thank you, everyone. That brings us to item 11, study session on a... and the provision of direction on current rules and process related to construction time limits in San Carlos. Welcome, Chris.
All right, I'll get started. Good evening, Mayor Dugan and members of council, Chris Valli, building official. This evening, we are receiving, you are receiving, an update on the construction time limit ordinance. The ordinance was adopted by council on May 11, 2020, just before the disruption of COVID, and is based upon similar construction time limit ordinances in neighboring communities. The ordinance itself was created due to the 1501 Cherry Street project that incurred numerous delays primarily at the hands of the developer. The project was completed approximately 20 months after the adoption of the time limit ordinance, and a final certificate of occupancy was, in fact, issued on August 8, 2022. The construction time limit ordinance is broken down into tiered time limits based upon estimated value of construction. It is important to note that this is not a one-size-fits-all, in that some projects, due to complexity, size, and so forth, may take longer to build than what the table states. And this is where the discretionary authority of the building official comes into play to navigate these scenarios. Here also is the extension fee table, as stated in the ordinance, just for your reference. And here is the construction completion penalties table, as also mentioned in the ordinance, again, for your reference, and we can revisit these slides if you'd like later on. Project delays is often time associated with PG&E. New homes and residential reconstruction projects, we have found, require a nine-to-12-month lead time for utility connection. As reported by a local developer, his mixed-use multi-residential project required up to four years for PG&E utility connection due to internal review coordination delays by the utility provider. Utility disconnect, even for simple demolition projects, oftentimes requires a four-to-six-month lead time. I have personally contacted PG&E about their lead time issues, but there's been no meaningful response or effort to improve services thus far. As mentioned earlier, COVID-19 occurred soon after the construction time limit ordinance was adopted. COVID-19 resulted in supply chain and workforce disruption, as well as economic turmoil and government restrictions on construction work. Government-mandated lockdowns resulted in project delays throughout our nation, and this, of course, included San Carlos. Project complexity plays a big part in the time it takes to build a project, and hillside projects may require more time than allotted due to complex tieback and retaining wall systems and so forth. Owner-builder projects generally require more time to complete than projects built by a contractor. Since the construction time limit ordinance was adopted, we estimate approximately 600 owner-builder projects have been issued. Approximately 50% of the residents that take on an owner-builder project end up hiring a contractor to complete the project. Also, residents may end up with simply a bad contractor and have to part ways. The time it takes to find a new contractor adds more time than normal to complete the project, and with that, complexity comes in many shapes, sizes, and this is a conversation that we routinely must navigate. It is essential that property owners, as part of their overall due diligence, take the time to check at least three references before selecting a contractor to avoid unnecessary project delays. The community development department has not issued any fees or fines since the adoption of the ordinance. Residential and commercial projects typically move along with steady progress and with regularly scheduled inspections. Our customer service philosophy is to help people first and avoid punitive measures unless absolutely necessary. Staff will continue to respond to council and community's concerns, however, and take appropriate steps and make necessary adjustments as needed. And I'm available for questions now.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate that overview and of this ordinance. Do we have any questions from council on this? Councilmember Rack?
Thank you. Since I was the one that requested this, I guess I should kick things off. Chris, thanks for the presentation, and I certainly appreciate all the work that you and your team do in terms of the oversight and moving things along, to your point on the construction, and I certainly can relate, since we had to fire our contractor for their project that we did for our house, so I certainly know that things happen. So, you know, I... and I guess I had a couple of questions. One, in terms, I know you mentioned there's no sort of enforcement measures that have come in, so... but in terms of extensions, how often are you seeing doing sort of the extensions that we built in there?
The same applies to extensions. We have not extension, I'm sorry, we have not issued extensions through this ordinance. We have issued extensions through the regular building code process, and it's a fairly informal process. People email us, they call us, and, hey, we need a little extra time in our, to complete our project. And so in that realm, we issue a fair amount of extensions, and it's, like I said, it's a very informal process. It can be by email, a phone call, but it does get inputted in the case, and we allow, you know, 160 days, 90 days, whatever is communicated to us as needed to complete the project.
So, given that, though, how does that work, though, in terms of the ordinance we have? It sounds like that's sort of working outside of what the ordinance is on time limit, so can you explain how that works?
It is actually working outside of the ordinance. Like I said earlier, in addition to not issuing any fees or fines through the time limit ordinance, we also have not issued any extensions through the time limit ordinance. Our extensions thus far have been an informal process, where people email us, I realize I'm repeating myself, and we simply just grant that extension informally, and we make a note of it in the case, and again, it's kind of under our guise of assisting property owners and contractors with their project toward completion.
Okay, so I guess I'm, I guess I'm just, and I guess I'd love to understand either from Greg or something, too, on this. So if we have this ordinance in place, but yet we're sort of going out, I'm not sure then why we have the ordinance in the first place if we're not using the ordinance to address issues of extensions, or where there's issues.
You know, it's an interesting question. I'll have to follow up with Chris about the processes he's employing, but it looks to me like the, when someone asks for an extension, it's intending to apply both the, whatever extension they're asking for under the normal building code, but it's trying to subsume this, too, because otherwise they wouldn't be asking for an extension. They have time, they always have time to, they have to do all the inspections within 180 days. There's a lot of requirements to keep your permit active. That's what I think might be happening, but I think I need to do a little further inquiry on that for you.
Okay, because I guess for me, then, I would think that one of the things we should think about doing is sort of aligning those two together, so we don't have these two running concurrently, and put you in a, just give you the, this is the ordinance, this is how we manage it, into a single ordinance versus having this one regular building code and one construction time limit, because it sounds like they're not, they're sort of a little bit not working hand in hand. And so to me, that seems like that's something we should think about as a follow-on.
There's a little over, yeah, pardon me, I didn't mean to...
No, you're fine.
There is a little overlap in this, because it does, this does talk about inspections having to be called at least once every 180 days. It also, there is some overlap between the two ordinances. I think it's just, it's been happening probably rare enough that this may not be being specifically looked at, but it certainly could be looked at as an overlay to the other requirements.
I mean, I think for me, I would like to see some sort of alignment, and I, Chris, I get that you're, you know, you're following this code, and you've got, we've got multiple things. To me, we'd be better off having a single alignment on this, so that we're not, you know, we're all on the same page with this, because it sounds like there's too many choices, maybe, in terms of how you address it, or maybe there's not too many choices, but there's these options that you can go this route, or you can go that route.
If I could just add one item to that, the folks that are contacting us to, you know, request an extension are, I would say, 99 times out of 100, or 100%, are projects that are moving along at a reasonable, at a reasonable pace and have been calling for inspections, you know, every 180 days, and there might be that gap toward the end for, I don't know, financial or personal or some reason that folks need to navigate. And so it's, the extensions that we're giving at the building division is, again, overall with projects that have been moving along at a reasonable... overall with projects that have been moving along at a reasonable pace, not projects that have been perhaps dormant for, you know, a year or so, or there's been zero communication with staff on what's happening next, there's been zero progress, or there's even a life safety hazard that exists with the job site that we -- that's not getting addressed. And so, personally or professionally, I see that that's where perhaps more of an arena where this -- where the time limit ordinance would be enacted. But again, we're here to discuss the ordinance and receive, you know, ideas and direction.
And I'll let others talk to him, and may come back for a question. But I just -- and I'm not a -- I'm not opposed to giving you the flexibility you need, because there are circumstances that could come up. I get that. I guess I'm just sort of feeling like we've got two different ordinances running with the -- and we're not sort of marrying the two. We put the time limit ordinance in because of the project on Cherry Street, and then, you know, we -- I was contacted because of one on Coronado that a resident felt like, gosh, this has been going on since, I think I looked -- I set the timeline since 2018 for various things, some things that we've done, because we had work stoppages, things that the contractor did incorrectly, and so a whole range of stuff. And I just -- so that was sort of the impetus to want to have this discussion, but I don't know. I think I'd like to look at finding more consistency and sort of streamlining in terms of how we address this. That would be my thought on that. I'm happy to share all the questions. Pass on.
Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions, Chris. So, if there were more, you know, changes such as Adam suggested or is suggesting to these ordinances, do you think they would result in any, you know, real-world changes?
No, I don't.
Why?
I -- the -- we -- this, like I mentioned in my -- one of my slides, you know, a majority of our projects move along at a reasonable pace toward completion with regularly-called inspections. I think it's good that we have this ordinance to utilize when absolutely needed. I think there's just -- when you look at the chain of events that have occurred over the last three years or so, we're weighing some, you know, reasoning behind not in applying this ordinance with everything that is -- was issued at that time or soon before that. And so, there's still reasons, at least in my mind, our mind, to hold off on utilizing this ordinance. I should note that the project that Councilmember Rack is referring to is very soon to being wrapped up. We're talking end of this month, and if not this month, then July is what we've been told.
Okay.
So, it is coming to an end.
My other question is that regarding the PG&E hookups, I believe we had a speaker come sometime in recent months who had an experience with reconstructing their house, and they were telling us some of the things that they wished that they had done. And one of the things they mentioned was that they wish they had contacted PG&E a lot sooner, you know, before they started the project, because you say here, utility hookup takes nine to 12 months for single-family residential projects. When should someone who is planning a remodel or just gotten plans approved, when should they contact PG&E and say, you know, I want to schedule a hookup?
Well, that's a good question, and there's a -- you've just removed the undergrounding of utilities for single-family residences.
We've removed that, correct?
Yes. That right there is a huge cost and timeline issue with single-family residences.
So, you think that alone should have a particular impact going forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely. Yeah, all they're doing now is putting in a new electric service and running a new line to the new -- much easier and less expensive and less time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Just my one question is, do you get a lot of complaints about construction time limits?
I'm going to say yes to that, but here's -- but here's -- there's a caveat to it, all right? There's a caveat to it. Everyone has a different idea of time. And so, a permit that we've issued nine months ago, that's been going on for three years, and we have to educate the caller, well, we just issued the permit nine months ago. So, I'm just giving you an exaggerated scenario of the dialogue, of the conversation that we have. So, everyone has a different concept of time, and we explain, you know, when the permit was issued, and they're calling for regular inspections, and, you know, this project is moving along at a typical pace, and the estimated timeline is insert date here. So, yes, we get complaints about how long a project has been taking to build, and we always respond to that inquiry, and we -- it usually involves, you know, educating the caller or email of the actual timeline and that things are in fact moving along. And of course, yeah, and that things are moving along.
Thank you, Pranita. And yeah, thank you, Chris. I think my question is for the city attorney. So, you know, construction's complicated, there's so many players involved. You know, I personally think there should definitely be discretion in this loop. It sounds like we've used a lot of discretion in this loop. But where does that put us when the next 1501 Cherry Street shows up? And we really do want to apply it now, finally, selectively on this one guy we really don't like. Where does that put us?
Well, the ordinance provides specific -- it's 180 -- it depends on the valuation of the project, but let's say it's a project that's a substantial project, that's between five and 10 million. Well, under the ordinance, they have 31 months from the issuance of the building permit to complete that project. If they don't, then they can ask for 60-day extensions, each of which is a half a percent of the valuation. Pretty steep line. And so, if we had a project like that, the building official or the inspectors would inform them of the time limits. It's designed to be that when they pull the building permit, the valuation's set, and that determines how much time they have the project. So, the building developers should be aware of that, those time limits. And then, if they don't get an extension, there's other penalties for being beyond the timeline that they've agreed to. So, those are much lower percentages. And then, I just want to add while I'm talking about those, that the -- we built into this, you know, that the city council is to look at these two charts from time to time. So, I guess it's appropriate that it's being brought up for a study session, that you might want to look at how feasible these -- what we're doing, whether the valuations are in alignment with now as opposed to four years ago when you passed the ordinance. So, there's an opportunity to look at it. But I think the way it was designed, you know, is that flexibility is really required, because we really can't foresee all these circumstances that might impact a timeline. So, I think that that part of it's been working when we do have a delay that someone has a good reason for. If they don't, then the way it happens in the code is the chief building official issues an order to complete your project at the end of the day if they're not making the progress, and then that triggers those penalties for exceeding the timeline.
Okay. But we're confident applying discretion as we do when we go to actively enforce this. We're confident that would survive scrutiny?
Yeah, I -- yes. We've -- we looked at a whole bunch of different ordinances that were like this when we drafted this, and they're fairly common in the structure. And it really does become incumbent on the developer or the builder to know about these timelines that are in our code, they should be familiar with them. And if they don't request the extension, then they're vulnerable to have the penalties that we've put in there, or the extension fees that we've put in there, pardon me.
Okay. Thank you. Jeff, did you have a further comment?
Yeah, I was just going to add a little sort of high-altitude commentary on this in terms of where we're at, you know. When Councilmember Rack brought this up, I think probably as far back as 2019 in regards to a pretty glaring project that we were having going on right around the corner from City Hall. What the council did in approving the ordinance we've got today is they've given us a very powerful tool. But really, the intent of that tool is to use it on bad actors, which thankfully, in the building community, whether it's a homeowner, self-project, or a contractor, you know, you're dealing with parties that are very motivated to get their project done. That's why they came in to get the building permit in the first place. And before they ever break ground, they've spent, as you know, you've seen the fees and the numbers and the shock value that goes along with that, they've invested a lot of money just to start the process going. So, it's rare that we do run into bad actors, but it does happen. And the ordinance that you've got in place now really provides us with a very powerful tool that we haven't had before. You know, I can remember back in 2005, dealing with some really difficult projects in town that were very bad actors, and tools like that would have been exceedingly helpful. So, I know that, you know, our building department, under Chris's leadership, is very customer service-oriented. It can be a very -- if you've ever -- I think pretty much everybody on the dais has done a project, so we can all sympathize. It is a very, very difficult process, not just not -- our city makes it as easy as we can make it, but it's just stressful and difficult, and much longer than, you know, it's ever going to work out. But I do know in our building official and in the staff in the department, you've got individuals that, when they do come across a bad actor, are not going to hesitate to work with city attorney to enforce the ordinance and come down hard. They issue stop-work orders on, you know, multi-hundred-million-dollar projects. So, dealing with a small residential project when they don't do a good job and they're making problems for the neighbors is one thing, but I do very much appreciate the approach and the discretion that we use to analyze the facts, because it's very difficult. And one of the things when we get into the enforcement world is we got to make sure our enforcement record is consistent once we start applying things. And, you know, there's just a lot -- we see, you know, a lot of cases and a lot of applications that come in that simply, you know, we believe that those are extenuating circumstances. And at the end of the day, what we know the community wants more than anything is to get the project done. And, you know, so you're -- you know, the big fines and the big interruptions are kind of a last -- they're the nuclear resort for us, and we're glad we have them. But, you know, they are our last resort.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Councilmember Rack.
I just have one last question on that. And I thank you, Jeff, and Greg, and Chris, thanks for the -- this is helpful for me. I guess the -- and this may be for a combination of both of you, just so if you have these projects that you're sort of doing these regular extensions, and people are making progress and everything else, I mean, when, if you hit at some point, three years, four years down the road, and it's not done, you're kind of saying to yourself, gosh, this really should be done already, this is kind of dragging, what's the process to then -- now, can you just flip over to the time ordinance one and say, wait a minute, you're -- this has been four years now, we've been really flexible with you, I need to kind of do this next hammer? To the -- there's sort of not -- it's -- we don't have to, like, start things over, it's just sort of -- that point, we can swap over and say, hey, you're under this ordinance now, because you're just -- it's dragged on too long, and you're not really doing what we expected you to be doing.
I -- yes. Yeah.
Yeah, no more extensions, and in order to complete, which would then trigger the provisions in the code.
Okay. Yeah. All right, I appreciate that. And Chris, I'm glad to hear just from you and from your team that, you know, you feel like things are -- you appreciate having this sort of extra ordinance in there and that, but that things are working, and you feel like this is a good tool for you to have. So, I appreciate that. I think it's good that we kind of check on these things every once in a while. I think it's, you know, we don't always get it right the first time, and so I think it's good to do that, so.
I wish we had it in 2015.
And Jeff says, wish we had it in 2005, so.
2005, then, all right.
But we have it now.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. So, Adam, you feel like -- well, I appreciate that you brought this forward. I know there's certainly a concern in the community from time to time about projects that drag on, and I think we did have a bad actor, at least for a period of time, at 1501 Cherry, and they bad-acted their way out of business, it sounded like. So, the -- so, I appreciate you bringing it forward. Did your concerns get addressed, and you're more comfortable now?
I am more comfortable. I think I would -- I will like to just chat with Greg at some point, just about sort of the two sort of ordinances running parallel, and I can do that offline. I feel like I can get what I need from that, so.
Okay.
This is super helpful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Trivik, thank you, Chris.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Then, moving on to item 12, agenda setting. Does anyone have something they would like to put on a future agenda? Vice Mayor McDowell.
No, go ahead. You go first. Did you have something?
I do.
We got -- I'll be super fast. I just -- okay. I just -- I mentioned earlier about just the Juneteenth and the holidays. I just would like to understand maybe what our process is to notify builders that we are -- that this is a holiday, there's no construction on it. Just because I drove by, there were big projects, housing projects, everything going on all throughout the process, and it's maybe that agenda setting, but I'd like to get.
I think I can speak to that, Chris, because you and I just talked about it the other day. You know, I didn't think about that heading into Juneteenth this year, about how it was the first Juneteenth in our community, that it was celebrated as a holiday. So, probably in hindsight, would have been a good idea for us to deuce, like, a mailing to folks. But I think going forward, it will be less of an issue. What we've already done, and we're doing prior, is it is included in the paperwork that you get when you get your building permit, along with all the other holidays. So, it's listed right there on your permit. So, no permit holder can say to us or could say to us on Juneteenth that they didn't know. It's right on their permit that they should not have been doing construction. So, we got -- we did get a couple of reports, and we made contact with those builders, and they're dealing with the fall down.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick agenda-setting proposal. We, in recent days, heard from an East Side resident who unfortunately has experienced having a shared fence shot through with a pellet gun. And I spoke with the city manager about this today, and we do have an ordinance, I think it's state law or federal law, that you can't fire a firearm within city limits, but we don't have anything that covers a pellet gun or an air gun. And so, I would like to study that or, you know, consult with the city attorney about whether we should have an ordinance that does not allow firing that type of instrument in our community.
Councilmember Venkatesh.
I was going to ask about the same ordinance. We all received that email.
All right. Councilmember Rack.
I'm not opposed to doing that. I just want to understand, because we have a certain process in place that things need to be listed ahead of time. I just want to make sure we're not sort of out of compliance. I'm happy to support it. I just don't want to get out of compliance, and if you -- if we need to do it at the next whatever meeting, I'm happy to do that.
As I understand the council's policy, the council's preference is that those things get communicated in advance of the agenda being sent out. However, the council has said in the past that they understand that there's a gap between when the agenda goes out and when we have the meeting, and sometimes real-world activity has taken place since then. I think this falls into that category, where I don't think anybody on the council knew when we put the agenda out that this was a possible agenda-setting issue. So, I think that's why it's before you tonight.
Yeah, I think the informal policy is that when something is brought to the council attention by the public, that you have been able to use this part of the agenda to be able to add something to a future agenda.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're in the right on it, and I'm happy to support it. Thank you for bringing it up.
All right. Yeah. No, it's an item of concern. You know, the situation is still fairly active, maybe even fresh. So, you know, I think when we consider it, we'll have a better understanding of everything. But it sounds like we want to put that on a future agenda, so, very good. And I see no other hands, so that brings us to 13. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for doing that.
Good.